Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Monday, February 24th, 2014. Welcome to the school committee. Just a note for my fellow members in the audience. We are live this evening, so please keep that in mind. And also, to the extent that any members of the audience wish to address the committee, please raise your hand. You'll be acknowledged periodically. Come to the podium, state your name, address, and your comment or question.
Maybe you'll get like a 15-second delay in case you really...
And you were not acknowledged, so you're out of order, Mr. Freeman. Exactly. There's no delay. There's no delay. So we'll get going. We have a full agenda this evening. Those of you who didn't find parking, come as you can, or watch at home. We'll start with the approval of minutes. We have two sessions to approve. The joint meeting on February 6th, and then the regular school committee on February 10th. Do I have a motion for the February 6th session?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
February 10th, 2014, regular school committee. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, February 10th.
There's a second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to student communications. James, welcome. Can you find parking, James?
So, we just got back from break. It was a good break. The jean drive, we collected around 500 pairs of jeans, and I think there's another 100 or so being collected from one other place. Next week, 12 students from Student Council will be going to the MAS-C, Massachusetts Association of Student Council Annual Conference, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then there's the festival play coming up this week, I believe.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night. Yep. That's all I have today.
We have a basketball team is in the state tournament?
Yes.
Wednesday at Westwood, I think? Maybe? Something like that.
That's right.
The boys' basketball team?
Right.
Yeah, that's right. You should know.
I think...
Tournament, so it's a...
Playoff.
Yeah. Right.
Girls' hockey, I believe, as well.
Playing St. Mary's.
Right.
And the boys' and girls' swim teams had their best years ever. The boys were finished third overall, and two second places, and a couple others. And the girls had a fifth place, and several personal bests from all the teams.
That's great.
They did very well last weekend.
Good to hear.
American.
Thanks for that. Any other communications, Doc?
No.
Questions and comments from the audience? Anything not on the agenda? No? Okay. Superintendent's report.
I don't have anything, other than the package.
Wow. Moving right along.
Moving right along.
It's a full agenda, so they'll be... We'll slow down in a couple minutes. There appears to be no unfinished business, although I find that remarkably...
Remarkable.
Remarkable. Going on to new business.
You know, we used to call it old business, and someone let us know that that really wasn't the appropriate term, that it should be unfinished business. But next week, we'll have unfinished business because we're doing first reading of a policy.
Policy.
And we'll vote it for the next year.
So moving on to new business. We're welcomed by Linda Port, distinguished chair of the Special Education Funding Working Group, who's here to talk to us about the Language for the Warrant article.
I don't know how much...
Join us in here. Thank you.
You do have this in your packet, but I tried to get another one as well.
I don't know. I assume you guys are pretty up to speed on what the working group's been doing, who's the members, that kind of stuff? All right. So, we... This is... We have three different things, actually, we're trying to accomplish. This is only...
I'm sorry. Excuse me. For the folks at home, maybe just a quick one-minute reminder?
Okay. There was a special ed funding working group that was established because there was a big gap one year of about $500,000, because there were not enough monies in the budget to pay for special ed tuitions. There were two particular, I think it was two...
Three.
Three students which had moved into the town, so big expenses that the town really had a struggle to handle. And the thought was, this wasn't going to happen again. So hence was formed the Special Ed Funding Working Group. We tackled it from a lot of different avenues, but we tried to be practical, deal with some reality, but trying to actually make a difference. So one of the three things we recommended is a home rule petition, which would just apply to the town of Hingham. It's similar to some state legislation that is going through right now. If the state legislation goes through, we wouldn't need this, but since we never know what's going to happen with state legislation, it seemed to make more sense to kind of move this along. We'll dual-track it. If the state goes through, we'll pull this out. It also protects if the state legislation really changes a lot. We like this approach. So it's... What this is doing would be establish a reserve fund, which would be under the control of the school committee, which would be available to pay unanticipated, unbudgeted, and/or extraordinary costs of special ed tuition and transportation costs. And it is broad in some ways, but the goal is to try to... We kind of thought about, what are all the situations that can come up? And we wanted to make sure that... We don't want to be in a situation where we've gone to the state for some legislation, and something comes up and you can't afford to... We can't pay it, even though it causes a problem on the town budgetary side. The ways we envision the money would go in on a year like this, where there's a lot of extra money in the town budget because of the special ed tuitions that are done as reimbursement. So you have a lot come in in the year, where tuition costs this year are a little lower. You'd be able... If we had this now, we would put some... We would suggest put some of that money in the reserve fund, so two years later, when things are out of whack and special ed costs are higher than expected, you'd have this reserve fund to fall upon. So the money would either could go from the school, we have it, that the town could put it in at town meeting, or the selectman could put it in from the current year budget. So as, you know, it would be... It would just be much more fiscally prudent to fill up this fund, try to get to a level that makes sense. And we use the 2% that was in the state legislation. It's a big... It's... I think it's 700-something thousand dollars. I don't think we'd go that big. Maybe you'd go to like 500,000. But as time changes, we don't know, state reimbursements, a lot of things can go on. It just seems safer to... Might as well put in the number that the state's envisioning in their legislation. Available for any questions? And then the only other thing I would say is the other two pieces are some legislation that were... That I think you guys have seen before. If not, we'll get to you. But that we're going to propose that we go to get Garrett Bradley to file and try to lobby behind to... That would deal with special ed transportation costs, try to get reimbursement, and try to get reimbursement for the most expensive kids. Any questions?
Andy. Go, Carol. If you want to go.
Don't fight.
Linda, just a quick question, and it just popped into my head as you were talking. So in a year like last year, where we had some unexpended special ed money, I was envisioning this recommendation that we could have put some of that money that we returned to the town, we could have put into a fund like this. But are you suggesting that we might put money out of our, like, our operating current budget, like in the middle of the budget, into this as well? Because you were talking about how we're getting the reimbursement.
I'm envisioning that in the... Actually, I'm playing off on the timing on when you got the big chunk of money.
That's coming, well, it'll be in this...
It's this, yeah. That's the money I was envisioning that you'd put into the...
But there are several ways that money could go into that account. So in a year when we had a large amount of money coming back as reimbursement...
Right.
For things we'd already paid, that would be one way for it to go in. The town could choose to put money in, or we could put it in out of our operating budget, or in the year...
Or at the end of the year, you could... I think I was more envisioning that we would do it more as we get towards the end of the year, when we know, you know, what monies may be available. Because I wouldn't want us at the beginning of an operating year parking money into this before we know what happens.
No, I wouldn't. Right. No. Yeah. I mean, obviously, the legislation would let you do it whenever, but I can't imagine anyone would ever do it until at the end of the year.
I would agree.
Right.
I just wanted to be clear that there was no expectation that would happen earlier versus later in a fiscal year.
The problem is that the reserve fund process that the town has for unexpected stuff doesn't give enough wiggle room. There's not enough money there. It's not big enough to handle, you know, the $500,000. It's also got the problem of confidentiality, that you have individual kids who come through. We need money for Steven Jones that'll, you know...
Exactly. All right. Thank you.
Andy.
You just brought up another question, which I have a question on. So it's interesting to me, you just talked about reserve funds. To me, we've never not met our special education needs, and so I don't understand really why we need another reserve fund. And, you know, especially, like, sometimes you think of knee-jerk reactions. We had that year in 2010, where we had the three students. But nice thing is now, we're actually breaking out our special ed budget from our regular ed budget. We know what it is, but we also get the reimbursement. In the last two years, we received that windfall. So I don't... I'm a little confused why we need an extra reserve fund.
It's a timing problem. It's that you're... The state picks up for the higher, you know...
Well, the circuit... The way the circuit breaker actually works, we basically get four times...
It comes in the next...
We're responsible for four times of the kid's tuition, and then the transportation.
But the money doesn't come back from the state until kind of... It starts, like, we report at the end of the year, so it's kind of coming in in the next year. And if the state doesn't fund at the amount that you've expected, you know... So there's both the problem of, it's not in the same cycle. You're getting it later, so you're expecting it. And also that sometimes that fourth payment, if it doesn't get funded, can go into the following fiscal year. And it's also the unknowable... I mean, fortunately, and this is a great tribute to the superintendent, you know, the school committee, I mean, the school budget has been... They've been... You've been able to live, for the most part, without having to go back to the town, within the resources. But the potential for a single tuition can be... What's the...
250.
20 is our biggest.
It's... That's a big amount of money. And if you think about, you're doing the budget process now, right? I mean, by the time we go to town meeting, the situation can change. I mean, I think it's kind of lucky that it's only happened once in that extreme. I don't expect it's going to be that extreme again, but to have some money to level it out, I mean, we were lucky, the town was lucky, that the year you came in for $500,000, the town could figure out how to fund it. But the reason this committee came about is because the town said, never again, that was too hard.
Well, and if I could just add, Andy, one of the points, when it happened two years ago, if we hadn't been able to work together as a town to come up with that $533,000 from other sources, then we would have had to absorb it, and it would have come at the detriment of our regular education budget. So that's why having a fund like this, and $533,000 out of the regular education budget means layoffs. Well, I guess continuing... I mean, every year, even in '08, fiscal year '08, '09, when it was tough, we still returned money to the town from our operating budget. And, you know, so again, I just say that I don't know any situation where we've not... Listen, I support our special ed. I've always done that. I'm not trying to take anything away from them. I just feel we've always met our obligations, and this seems now almost like an extra reserve fund, when we have a very... I don't know how many millions are in the town reserve fund. It's like 15 or whatever, where I think that if we have this extraordinary circumstances, that I just... You're not... I'm not understanding why this is so important.
Dennis, you want to...
Yeah.
Yeah, Dennis.
So I think the issue is, and I think I mentioned this perhaps at one of our past meetings, in reality, we could do this internally ourselves. We could say, you know, the town, the school department returned $800,000 last year in special ed. We could say, okay, we understand that's part of now fund balance, and in the future, if we needed that, you know, it could come out of that fund balance, like you're saying, and it could be used this way. As I've talked to some people about that, it's just difficult. You know, we don't have perhaps always the institutional memory to remember what happened three years ago, or two years ago, or five years ago, is the one piece. And the second part is, as Linda suggested, I think what April 1st is the cutoff, I think, for when we have responsibility for a child coming in, so we could finish our whole budget process. And on March 25th, we could have two kids move in that we'd then be responsible for the next year. Then we'd have to go back, re-vote all the budgets, and so forth. So I think it's just a way to provide kind of a safety valve. It may not address every problem or every issue that comes up. It's the same money, you're right, that would otherwise be in fund balance. I think it just takes kind of a couple steps out of it, you know, of getting to that money and allocating it to something that's really not discretionary.
And also addresses the privacy issue, which I think, if you were to go to fund balance, you would have to say why you're doing it, which might then infringe on a student's privacy. This way, you don't need to do that.
Well, I mean, we've never, with our entire special ed budget, when you say that, our entire special ed budget, we've never mentioned any child's name.
No, I understand, but...
Right. But what they're talking about is if use of a stabilization fund, like when we put the meals tax in, and we put the meals tax, take it out, that's a vote of town meeting. People would have questions as to why that money is coming out. What's the purpose? Who's it for? And... Well, then you're protected by privacy. You don't... Would you have to answer that question? Yeah, but, well, you wouldn't.
I wouldn't.
You wouldn't. But then you couldn't expect people to vote favorably for it if they didn't feel comfortable having enough information. The process just is challenging when you're talking about confidential information to go through a stabilization fund process.
It also seems to me, I mean, whether or not it's at the town level or the school committee level, and you can fight about where, you know, where, who should properly control it. To me, this is a... It's like Snow and I, you know, maybe it's not every year, but it has... It's definitely, when we...
Dr. Gell always refers to it that way.
I don't have the graph, but when you look at the disconnect between the reimbursements and the... I mean, the graphs don't go together, you know, as they should. Like, if you could get the... We talked a lot about, can we get the... To be a direct pay system, then, you know, this problem would go away. But because it's not a direct pay system, it just seems, if I were running my own home and I had this expense that went like this, I mean, rather than have to be really tight in some years, you know, when the expenses are up, I mean, why... It seems better from a budgetary perspective to kind of level it out by having a reserve fund that can be used in the tough years, and fill it back up in the other years. And in my... I mean, as member of the school committee, I would say, of course, I'd rather have that control. Then I don't have to go to the town. I don't have to worry about what else is going on in the town. I can make sure these special ed budgets get covered.
Can you explain to me the difference between the home rule, which I understand?
Yeah.
And then in case the legislator actually enacts something? What's the difference between our plan and what they have?
Um...
Because the one thing I'm worried about is, what happens if we enact this home rule, and then nothing comes from the legislator? Then we have this reserve fund. Would that make... I mean, obviously, Hingham's a very desirable community, but what could that...
Paul, do you want to?
I mean, I can comment, I think, on it. The difference is the home rule petition, and maybe as you already know, is just dealing with Hingham itself. So if the other legislation passes, it would encompass every community. And your concern is it might draw people in, which is, I think, is not a bad...
Which is not a bad thing either.
I don't think that's a bad thing. It drew me in, so, I mean, you know... But I don't think that's going to be on the level or scale that people are going to be looking at that. That fund, that I... The way I understand it, if the selectman requests it and it goes through, it's going to be sitting there at a finite fixed level, not to exceed. And so, you know, it's not as if we're going to be going to the well all the time. I don't think people are going to be looking at that if you're moving to town about this reserve fund. It's not that kind of fund.
Right.
But the thing is, what exactly is right now in front of the legislators? What's their plan? What's their bill?
It's basically the same thing as the...
Very similar.
So then why don't we just wait for the legislators?
Because we might wait three years for them.
Because it may not happen, and...
It may never happen.
And there's... If we went through every bill with the state legislature on special ed, it's a pretty big list. Now, that piece of legislation has gone through third reading, so it looks pretty promising. But my thought is, so we wait for it, doesn't pass, and now we can go back and do this again next year? It seems worth...
I guess I always joke, Linda, and I appreciate all your committee's work, is I always say, Dr. Gell, I always think about not unfunded mandates, but taking on more responsibilities. And so on this one here, again, I never... I think one of the wonderful thing about Hingham is, we've always met our needs. We've never turned anyone down. Even in the tough years, we funded everything. We have a very large reserve fund. I think we have plenty of mechanisms in place. I don't understand why we, of all, you know, why this one is at the top of the thing, especially before the legislators pass it.
It was a tough... I mean, I wasn't involved. I fortunately had already moved past advisory, but my understanding is, coming up with that 533 was a big stretch for the town. And we were lucky it happened in a year we could do it. And it might not happen in a year we can do it.
One last thing, Ray.
Yeah, Paul.
Yeah. I mean, just from experience, and I think we all may know it, it's never a good idea to wait for the state legislature to enact a particular bill because of all the factors and dynamics that go on. And obviously, it was a need that was suggested, and this process was requested, it was a committee forum, so... I mean, you know, people can differ on what they think about how the end result is or what we should do, but, I mean, I know I was part of the process, and I mean, we had a good cross-section of, you know, interested people in the community. And I think it's there to be helpful, not to cause problems. So I'm... I think it's a great idea.
You also, I can, you know, this... People are going to talk about how much to put in it, right? You may say, look, we'll look at it, let's only fund it at 50,000. I mean, this is just a legislation that authorizes this reserve fund to be established. There's nothing that says it must be maintained at any particular level. It doesn't say you have to fund it. It just authorizes you to.
Well, the thing I'm reading here says, shall not exceed 2% of the annual net school budget.
It can't be any bigger than that.
Right. So if our budget's 42 million, that's $840,000.
Can't exceed that.
I'm just saying, it can't be any...
Oh, you could put a 10,000.
It's whatever. It's net spending.
It's net spending, which was what, John, you figured out?
37, yeah. 779.
So when you're taking the offsets into account.
Yeah. And 2% was like 741,000.
I think it's 741,000. I saw someone compute.
Would be the cap.
But it doesn't, again, it doesn't... That's just the max. You know, you don't have to fund it at that. And presumably, this group is going to talk about that.
Linda, you talk about in this, how to put money into the account?
Yep.
What is the procedure for taking money out?
It's for the school committee.
That would be our vote.
Strictly school committee vote? So even though the selectman could vote to put money in, it remains a school committee vote to take the money out?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, if this fund, if I'm on the, you know, this is... If I'm over on advisory, I'm on selectmen, and I'm worried about this group has put up too big a fund, and I think, this is crazy, we have too many reserves over there, they can fix that, right? The following year, they don't give you enough, guess what? You're going to have unbudgeted special ed costs you're going to have to hit this fund for. Or, I mean, it's the way, if there's... If the system changes, you don't need as big a reserve, or the times are tougher, and you say, we can't have that big a reserve, then there's a way to fix, to get to a different number. I would think as... I mean, this is the group I would most think would say, this is a good thing. We're now in control a little bit more of our destiny. We don't have to go back to the other town side and say, please, please, you know, we have these mandatory... I mean, you can't not fund these expenses.
Yeah. I don't have an issue with it. I got the question from constituents, and I thought that's what it was, but I wanted to hear it from the person who originated it, to make sure that I wasn't saying the wrong thing.
Well, Eliza, too, if you look, there are a few different mechanisms to put money in. It's not just the selectmen. The school committee could also...
Right. No, no, I understand that, but that just, if there are other people putting money in, do other people want to say on taking the money out?
They have expectations.
Yeah, yeah.
And Andy, just to kind of amplify, so when this happened two years ago, you'll remember that, I believe that year was the peak of the percentage of our budget that was attributable to special education costs. I think it was nearly 26% that year. And that, I think, was the first year that we really started to look at special education costs in a different way. And then it was the week leading up to, I think, just a few days before the joint meeting with the selectmen and advisory, that we found out about the three students moving in and the $533,000. Given that set of circumstances, at that time, coming out of the recession, if we had not been able to find that half a million dollars elsewhere, we would have taken a significant hit from our regular education budget. And there were some who were typically detractors of school spending, who were vocal about the fact that the regular education budget shouldn't take a hit when something like this happens. There needs to be a mechanism put into place so that we can deal with unforeseen, unanticipated significant costs in this regard. So that's where this committee came, and they looked at a number of different ways to approach it. And as Linda said, there's this legislation that's been moving its way slowly through, but now, third reading, there's some promise there. But this is kind of belt and suspenders. If that doesn't go through, perhaps this will.
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Doc.
Two things. One is about that whole timing issue, that, you know, if we had waited to see whether or not that legislation goes through, it might be June or July, and then we've missed a town meeting. This process does require a town meeting, but then we'd have to wait another whole year to be able to set it up, and another year to put it in. So that's really the point of moving forward at this time, so that we kept both awards in the water. I think the other thing, there's been a lot of talk and descriptors used about a lot of money, is if we have pools and scads of money, we have to be careful how we think about that. Two years ago, when this happened, Ray is right, that the town stepped up to the plate and said, you know, this is not typical in your budget, and we were, in a sense, held harmless for that. We got that additional amount of money, and then we got a reasonable budget as well. So the, there was a lot of angst on all sides, that's why the committee represents the school committee, and the selectmen, and advisory has liaison on it as well, because people were saying, we've got to do something. But the town paid that money out. This year, the money that's coming in is our reimbursement for that. So the reason this money is coming in this year, and it can only be used for special education, is because the town put the money forth, and our feeling is that the town should deserve to be reimbursed, and so we turned back money this year, and that's only a fair thing to do. Now, we turned back more than the 533, and we can all discuss whether or not that was a good thing to do, given other needs, but anyway, that's what we did. And so it isn't a big pool of money, it's only there because those children were here, and others, and did go to school, and we did pay the bill, and the state is fulfilling its obligations, its current obligation, anyway, for that.
Dennis.
So are we looking to vote, then, in support of this tonight?
Yeah.
I, I think that the hope of the committee is, this is, was a committee that was appointed by selectmen, school committee, advisory liaison, we had some other folks on it as well, Liz, we had a CPAC person, another person who's a teacher in our district, so, and we had Dave Hennessy, Dave.
Allison.
Allison. And so it was a broad-based committee, so the committee is forwarding the warrant article. And certainly, the committee would not want to forward an article that the school committee thinks is just a terrible idea. On the other hand, all of us in this room, who are citizens, can go to town meeting, and we'll all have our own vote on it, on whether or not this is a good idea, you know, people will vote however, however they vote. So, so what I would be looking for, as a member of that committee, is there's a consensus that the process should go forward, and then let the citizens, including all of us in this room, be the ultimate deciders of whether or not this is a good idea or not.
I actually would go for, I, I would like to know that the schools, I mean, I want to be able to have advisory in their comments, say, the school committee is in support of it, and, you know.
No, I agree.
Even better if we can say it unanimous, but, you know, it is, you know, it is what it is.
Ed, would you like to make a motion?
I'll second the motion, it's Paul's motion to make.
I guess, thank you, Ed. I would make a motion that we, that we support the proposed formal petition that's been outlined by the Special Ed Funding Committee.
Is there any further discussion?
Paul was the rep on meeting.
And a former legislator. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to go oppose it.
You're opposing?
Yeah.
For the record.
I think you guys did a wonderful job, I just think the town does, does a good job on making its fulfillment obligations.
Linda, thank you very much for coming tonight. Appreciate your hard work. Okay, we have a few procurement matters to talk about before we get to the main feature this evening. So first, we have the South School Energy Management System, which is ready for bid, correct? I'm sorry, I already went out to bid, as I read.
Yes, it went out to bid. It went out to bid, we had a mandatory site visit on February 4th, only a couple of bidders showed up. We had about six bidders per packets, but only two bidders showed up at the mandatory walkthrough, and then one of them actually chose not to bid because Huntington Controls, which was one of the bidders that showed up, would have been their sub bidder for the job, so. The bids we're doing on February 13th, and when we received bids, we received only one bid, and that bid was from Huntington Controls at a price of $128,690. Our previous estimate for the job was $136,000, which is the amount that we actually have in capital for the project. So the bidder was required to make sure that they had certified techs and provided all those licenses, and the appropriate number of qualified personnel to do this job. They also provided 10 references and DCAM certification updates, because it's a Chapter 149 project, which is over $100,000 level. So today, I also did go to DCAM in Boston to review the evaluations on Huntington Controls. Also, I made a number of phone calls, couple have not returned yet, but I did talk to about four people for, for the references, and I reviewed all of the evaluations at They passed all evaluations, there was no failures, you know, and when you look at the evaluations, they, the guy explained to me there, if they're below 80, that would be some failure in some aspect, basically, they get certain points, if it's everything satisfactory, they come in at 80, all their scores were at 80 or up to 100. Of course, you have some contractors that say they're, they're great. Not always in these evaluations do they need to provide comments, so it's simply a checkbox, you know, and by reviewing them, you can get the feeling sometimes, like, okay, they just wanted to get over it, and everything was satisfactory, but the ones that did comment, basically commented to the positive, and said, you know, they were a good vendor to work with. Based on that, you know, and the other people that I talked to, I think that it would be a solid vendor to award this bid to, and if this is, it was bid out as a turnkey project, so they'll come in as one vendor, they'll do all the controls and update the valves, and, you know, a lot of that entails stringing new wire, because the new controls will be digital-based, so they have to do a lot of wiring. The implementation for the project would actually start sometime in April, vacation. They may be able to get some evaluation of the classrooms down, they probably won't be doing a lot of pulling of wires, but they can also work in the control rooms and get the, like, interfaces, the computerized stuff, all kind of set and ready to go, and then they would hit the project hard when school released in June, and it would probably extend through July, because there's actually a lot of work to be done here, getting to each one of the unit vents and the, in the classrooms, changing out the valves, and making sure they tie back to, to the controls. And essentially, it would be recommissioning the entire, you know, heating system in the building. So, you know, with that, I would recommend, I'm going to recommend that we award the South School EMS improvements to Huntington Controls at a price of $128,690. I have $136,000 in the budget, I would expect that I would use the entire 136, if not for, you know, probably, there, in the bid specs, there's also, what if we forgot a controller, or what if you see another controller, how much would that be? So we may have a couple of those, but I also think that it would be very beneficial to us if I hired some technical consultant to make sure they help us review the submittals and make sure that we're getting a system that's appropriate for us, in all respects, you know, help us manage it in some sense. So with that, I would ask for a recommendation, approval of awarding to Huntington Controls at $128,690, and also utilizing the entire amount of capital that's been allocated to this project.
Andy.
I'd like to make a motion to award the recommendation for energy management system at South School, the amount of $136,000.
To Huntington Controls.
To Huntington Controls.
Cool. But you said 136?
136,000. Because he wants to use the full amount.
Right, but you have to award.
Yeah, but the $128,690 for the award, and, you know, the appropriate.
In total, not to exceed 136.
Yes.
Second.
Any further discussion, Ed?
John, have we done a project like this at any other school?
This is a, this is a fairly big project, Ed, we have not done a controls upgrade. I mean, in high school, we're doing a new interface, which will be a graphical user interface, which basically connects to some older controllers. And, you know, the high school's sort of in a similar situation, where the energy management system is old, but we figured out a way of sort of migrating that a little every year, so, you know, so we put in a new control system, which is the graphical user interface. In the event that we end up with some control issues in a section of the building, we bring wire to that section, change out those controls, but then that wire could be sort of like daisy chained to the other controllers in the area, so then we could do a project to convert over that entire section. But this control, the control system we have would work with the old controls as well as anything new controls, so it would sort of migrate to a better digital platform. And, and the, that high school system would be comparable, would be comparable and similar to the system that we're implementing itself. So eventually, with a little luck, we'd have a common platform across all of our schools.
Anything else? Andy?
So just on a timing issue, our fiscal year ends June 30th.
Yes.
And it's going to be completed July 31st, we're okay with capital, money, and all that stuff?
Yeah, as long as it, it would be, it would be encumbered, and it's, you know, it'd be a signed contract, and a set project, so the money is, as long as the money is in progress, we're in good shape.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great, John. Okay, next, we have, there are a couple of surplus items. First, John has a list of items to declare surplus.
Yes, you have a list in your packet of, eight, number eight, three, of new items that, you know, previously, when we declared Building 12 material surplus, these weren't really itemized out. We had a lot of general stuff, but these were actually in the workshop, and old, old tools and whatnot. They, they probably will fetch some, I got a bunch of pictures, yeah, I made copies of the pictures, but to the extent anybody would like to see the pictures. I mean, it's heavy metal, I would think that through auction, that they will sell, there's, there's no use of them for us. Barbara Pie would actually check with the Historical Society, see if they were interested in any pieces before, you know, we.
Historical Society?
The Historical Society. Historical Society, yes.
It's that old.
No, no, no. Chief, Barbara, Barbara would check with them, because, I mean, before we turn around and sell some of this stuff, you know, maybe, it's pretty old equipment, whether they have any, any use for it or not, we would just want to check, you know, but, so then we could just, you know, transfer it or let them come along and take it.
So maybe Chief Justice Cushing would have carved his initials in it or something?
You'll take a look at this, you'll know what I'm saying. So the, the auctions, auctions are going, I mean, Barbara Pie is putting the auctions up every week, they're going slow, some stuff isn't going at all, so we're putting, the process that we're, but some stuff is going, so when we get the money, we're putting it into the proper account at the town. Any expenses, like extra time that Barbara Pie is spending on this, is actually getting charged to that. We're probably going to get a dumpster, and, you know, to the extent we have old TVs that are no use or stuff like that, try to get rid of some stuff that we, after we already put it up to auction, we perceive this is no value whatsoever. And we're also trying to look for some consignment and auctioneers to say, come in, take a look at it, and say, is there some way that you can help us unload all of this stuff? Okay, so we have all these efforts in progress right now.
Great.
So I would recommend that if you could make another declaration of surplus, a motion to declare a surplus, and authorize me to get rid of it through auctions, and sealed bids, or other means as we see appropriate, and otherwise dispose of it in accordance with town procedures, that would be helpful.
There is a proposed motion written.
I'll read it.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to declare surplus, and to authorize Director of Business John Ferris to dispose of the listed equipment to the highest bidder in part or in whole through auctions, sealed bids, or other means in accordance with Massachusetts procurement laws. Funds received in excess of the cost of disposal, which may include advertisement commissions on the, commissions for online auctions, hourly, additional hourly wages for personnel managing, the disposal process, and other costs associated with disposal shall be deposited to the general fund.
Of the town.
Of the town.
The school.
Just a second.
That was long.
I'll second.
So I have only one question procedural.
Yes, Dan.
The next, we're going to next discuss about the modulators.
Yes.
Is there a reason not to include those in the same motion?
Yes.
If we're going to declare those surplus?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want, do we need to list the items in the motion or not?
No, we'll, we'll put this list along with the file.
This will go into the record.
Yeah, it'll go into the record, if this was declared surplus, I'll make a notation of this.
I'll second, Dave.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
So one of the reasons to keep it separate is tools and equipment, very different animal, we're likely to go through a different process with the modulators, so that brings us to the modulars. So we've talked about this previously, the last time we talked about it, I told you there wasn't a need to act at that time. Now there is no need not to act, and in fact, declaring it surplus this evening, which is something we're going to have to do anyway, one way or the other, no matter how the modulators are disposed of, it, it just, it frees us up to, to act when we need to act, and we may be able to act sooner rather than later. So where we are is, we continue to consult with Vanguard Modular Building Systems and Bob DiAngelo, the company that sold the modulators to us, he has indicated that his company would be interested in pursuing an opportunity to, to bid and relocate them if we were to go through an RFP process. But in the interim, since we last discussed this, John has made contact with some of his fellow business directors in other towns, and Boston has expressed an interest in these modulars. So is there any updates since we last?
The update, I was supposed to meet with him last Wednesday, but he had to cancel that, so tomorrow, actually, we're going to meet at the, the module is at 3:30, so he'll get it, he'll look at it. Very anxious, appears to be anxious.
We've been discussing this in the building committee as well, obviously, because that's part of kind of the process on track to, you know, once school ends, and we kind of have a timetable to get these modulars removed, so demolition can occur in a timely fashion. And really, July 15th is our drop dead date, by which they have to be removed and off-site. So obviously, any arrangement we would make, whether it's the city of Boston, or some other municipality, and if we were able to go that route, we don't have to go through an RFP process, we can convey to another municipality without going through that procurement process. If we weren't able to do that, and we did issue an RFP, then someone like Vanguard or anyone else would bid, and the, coming up with a value is something that would have to be determined, and also, it would, you know, probably be a, a price per square foot, the cost of tear down, utility termination, site restoration, and all of those things. We do still have the, the axles, hitches, and wheels that came with the modulars in 2008 at the depot, so those are, those are great. So tonight, I would, I would recommend that we act to declare the modular surplus. The worst-case scenario is they have to be demolished, but I think through conversations with Vanguard, we've taken that worst-case kind of off the table, and the worst case is that someone like Vanguard comes in, removes them, and we get just the cost of removal as compensation, and no additional compensation. Best-case scenario is someone like the city of Boston comes in and wants to buy them, there's some value there, and we don't have to go through a formal procurement process. So there's a number of options on the table, it's almost March, the middle school construction will be substantially complete probably by the end of March, furniture and fixtures and equipment will begin installation, to the extent it hasn't already, in April, and right after school ends, they're going to really be starting to move on demolition and site work. So the sooner we can get this teed up and ready, the better.
Question.
Yeah.
The RFP process, if we have to go that route, how long is that typically, John or Ray?
What does it mean?
If we have to pursue an RFP.
Well, you've got to go through the regular publication.
Right, it would take probably six weeks, yeah, six weeks is, I mean, you could push one through four weeks, but that's really, you have to bang, bang, bang for four weeks, but six weeks you could do it.
Thank you. Dennis.
Dennis.
Is there, has there been any discussion with Vanguard as to whether they'd be willing to do this on a consignment basis? In other words, presumably, they want, they're going to resell these at some point?
Right.
And so that we would be able to participate in some of the gain, as well as?
We haven't gotten that far, we've talked about it in concept, we haven't talked about what those numbers might mean. You know, I think, you know, just based on my discussions with Bob DiAngelo, you know, if that, something like that were to happen, and they were to come in and remove them and store them for a period of time, and that might be months, it might be a year, you know, that's not an ideal situation for them, so to the extent that, you know, they might make something on it, I don't know how much they'd be interested in sharing it, but, you know, it's something we can talk about, if that's the way, if we end up going an RFP, Vanguard will certainly be interested, and that's something we can talk to them about.
The only reason, the other possibility is that if, if Boston is seriously interested, it would be a way to evaluate perhaps the value of that option versus another option. If the option from Vanguard is just to take them away at no charge, you know where you stand, and Boston says, okay, we'll give you $100,000 for it, that's obviously superior alternatives.
Right, or they may want to take them away as well.
Or at no charge, right. But on the other, on the other hand, if Vanguard were to say to us, hey, you know, we think these are worth $100,000, it may take a year or two to, to sell them, but we feel confident in, in, you know, we would get 10% or 20% or 50% or whatever that differential is, less storage or whatever, again, it would be a way to evaluate that versus giving it to Boston, or selling it to Boston, whichever the case may be, so. I think it'd be useful just to have the conversation, and see if they're interested in doing that, and if he's willing to ballpark a number that says, you know, based on what we know of the marketplace, ultimately, we think these could be sold for 50,000, or 100,000, or 20,000, or whatever, just so we could evaluate it.
Right.
There were, there were, if I might, there were other towns that, when I first sent out the, the email on the list serve to a number of towns, three other towns actually responded as well, I think one was Hockington, I think Weymouth had some interest as well, and it was one of the towns, it eludes me right now, but.
It was either Newton or, wasn't Newton or Needham, and we heard about that they wanted it, but they only wanted four, or they wanted six?
Yeah, I'd have to go back to the email.
And they wanted something not quite what we had, so.
Yeah, because the sprinklers would be significant.
Ed.
Ray, declaring these, these units.
Surplus.
Surplus, surplus, thank you. Does that preclude the use in town?
No, they're declared surplus for use by the school committee, and, you know, technically, when things are declared surplus by, I believe this is the case, technically, when things are declared surplus by the body that has dominion and control over them, they revert, I think, to the selectmen. I think that's what the law provides.
And they are well aware of this, and?
And I've been talking with Ted about this for months, because I know that there's a space concern in town for a number of departments, and they're looking at a whole host of different options, but this was not something that jumped at folks in terms of being able to use them. And in keeping in mind that, you know, they fit together like a jigsaw puzzle, they don't have plumbing, although that's not insurmountable. You know, whether or not our building inspector would approve them as is, or require certain upgrades to be used, whether, depending on what the use, proposed use was. certain upgrades to be used, whether, depending on what the use, proposed use was, um, where they would go, so, um, you know, given the time constraints, um, at least as at this point, Ted doesn't have a good, uh, recommendation. Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, maybe I'll make the motion, so I don't have anything written. I would move that we declare the Hangum Middle School modular unit surplus for purposes of use by the school committee and school department in anticipation of disposing of, uh, of disposition by either RFP process or otherwise.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would comment, as rumors go, we got a, a fax, I guess this was today, and it was addressed to E. Scott Burke, of course.
I love the dear E.
Who preceded, um, Roger, and wrote the letter to dear E. And it's from someone who said there were two potential buyers who were interested in opening up negotiations to explore purchasing all or part of Hangum Middle School. So, apparently, when John put the word out, some people got the wrong word, and thought in fact, we were selling the school, and, uh, so there were two buyers, allegedly, one in Ohio and one in Miami, and, um, this person would like to, I guess, broker that, uh, that kind of a deal, so we'll be sure that he is corrected. Certainly could have the part that's the modulators to deal with, but not the whole school.
Yeah, or definitely, if there's a possibility of them, I'm not sure how the, uh, the remains of the school get, you know, taken care of, or whether that's up to break, but.
Right.
Dear E, I like that.
Yeah. Okay, so moving on to eight point five, revisiting our budget discussion, so before we start, I just had a few comments I wanted to, to make, kind of bringing this full circle. So, you know, Liza, this is your first time through our budget process, the others have been through it before, I think for those in the audience, this is not brand new, um, but from the outset, you know, we always talked about a process, and this has been, uh, at least two months, several meetings, a lot of hard work by many, um, and we're not quite done yet. Our approach to the fiscal 15 budget, uh, consistent with last year, was a focus on, um, needs rather than available resources, with the hope that the two would reconcile, and we're still hoping that they, they can, particularly in light of an improved economic climate, um, something we're working through right now. And the purpose, um, I think, in our approach, um, based on our discussions back in, in October, um, was, was to avoid a black and white level services discussion, um, but not, and, and not to refute the value of that approach for other town departments, or fault past efforts to characterize budgets that way. The, the needs approach evolved for a number of reasons, I think, most notably the increasing difficulty to define what level services is for the school department. Increases in both numbers of students and demographics, expanded needs of individual students, and a recognition of inadequate resources with additional and larger facilities coming online, um, has made it harder and harder. Someone reminded me just yesterday that level service is a fairly new approach to town budgeting, um, and for the school department, it's not really a natural method of evaluating a budget. And, so what we've tried to say all along is, not that we're better than other departments, or we're more worthy of available resources, but simply that we're different. As for the size of the department, the complexity of issues we face, the number of inexpensive mandates, and the variability and lack of certainty about many, many factors. But that's not to say we can't prioritize our needs, and we've said all along that we would do that. And what we'll consider tonight as a revised budget proposal represents just that, a prioritization of needs. The requests that don't make the cut, if we vote that way, are no less needed or worthy of funding than they were two weeks ago, but like all other departments, we're making hard choices in an effort to be a team player, something we strive to do each year. We've proved that every year, by managing our appropriation closely and conservatively, resulting in savings even in years, Andy, you pointed out, when we've been forced to cut. We proved it again at the close of fiscal 13 by returning over a million dollars to the town's bottom line, due largely to lower than anticipated costs that we talked about earlier, making many of this year's townwide proposals and initiatives possible. While we focused on the needs of our students, we, we've done so also, I think, with affordability in mind, as we try to do every year. We recognize that for many residents, particularly those without school-aged children, any increase in funding is hard to accept. We're not insensitive, I think, to this field, and we've talked about that. We're always seeking to strive, to strike a balance between the provision of necessary services and affordability to the taxpayer, and we look forward to working with the selectmen and the advisory committee in the coming weeks on a school budget that continues to meet the needs of the district at a price that Hangum can afford. And something that I would just point out before Dot takes over is, you know, something we need to make a better effort, um, to socialize, and I think Andy has some feelings on this in particular, uh, and will talk about in our annual report review, uh, in a little bit, um, the success that our students enjoy in the classroom, on the field, and after they leave us, um, the tangible byproduct of this budget. Our annual report details student successes in standardized testing and related achievements. Over 94% of our graduates continue their education formally, many at some of the most prestigious colleges in the nation. We have much to be proud of, and the dollars we earmark, earmark for education are well-spent and yield quality results. So I think it's, it's a message that folks need to hear, they need to hear the successes, they need to hear the positives that come out of this, it's not just about money, it's about what the money buys. So with that, I would ask Dot.
Thank you. So always a challenge, uh, a night like this, because we put budget together, because we believe that, um, certain things are important to our operation, um, and particularly when those certain things happen to be things that we classify as needs. And yet, we do, as Ray said, we live, uh, we live in a town where we value lots of the, of the services, and where we want other people to be able to enjoy the same town that we do, and so we need to look at, uh, some level of, um, physical conservatism, uh, about, about the budget anyway. So, um, I have a proposal tonight, John and, and I put this proposal together in terms of the dollars, although we, uh, talked as well to, um, the principals, and as well, we listened to all of you on January 30th, and while on the one hand, you were all unanimous about saying, let's move this budget forward, everybody had one or two particular things that they thought were most important to, um, to preserve, and, you know, not everyone in the room is going to be, uh, happy with this recommendation, that's all it is, it is a recommendation, and you'll have your, uh, your vote, and ultimately, the advisory committee and the selectmen will weigh in as to what they think about the budget as well. So, um, as we explored how we could reduce the bottom line, because it isn't just about what among the new proposals, uh, that we could cut, it's also about, can we look back at everything that's in the budget and look for things where we could have some savings in the bottom line? So these are the categories that we looked at. Did we have any recent personnel changes? Well, we had a few, in this case, they were mostly in the, the support areas, and they didn't amount to very large dollars, but we did look back at that. Could there be some more coming? Perhaps, we have that March 1 deadline coming up, we have still four or five people that are, uh, thinking about what they're going to do, some for the second time, um, in terms of next year, returning from leave or not, taking a leave or not, um, retiring or not, although I don't have retirement ones that I'm aware of. We also looked at other areas of the initial budget, and where could there be some cost savings there? We looked at, at the idea of added revenue, and some of you, in fact, commented on that, can we, uh, look again at the revolving accounts? And, and we can, and we have, can we look further as the spring develops, and as we know, we don't have the spring sports season, for example, so we don't even totally know what our revenue is going to be. But we did look at it here, and we can continue to look at that if the, the need arises. And then we did go to the list of the newly proposed needs based on things, and considered priorities, as we understand them from the, from the schools. We also looked, looked at existing service levels, because we can't separate the two out, and, um, as I have a concluding statement at the end about what kind of a budget I would call this, but, but I think it's a lot of things. It was based upon needs, not always easy to translate those needs into priorities, because if they're all needs, a need is a need is a need. And so it's hard to make judgments if they're all needs, on the other hand, it's hard to characterize, um, what level service is, and I'll comment a little bit on that in a minute. So those are the places that we looked. We saw this as an opportunity to take advantage of new information, as in the personnel case, uh, we reviewed every function in the original budget, line by line by line by line. We thought it was important to focus on the regular education part of the budget as we looked at reductions. Uh, a number of you, uh, pointed out that, um, that budget was going up at 8.5%, and raised the question about whether or not that's sustainable this year. It's sustainable for this year because we have, um, the additional money, uh, coming in, making the special ed budget increase actually a, a decrease. But can we sustain that? So we saw it important really to focus on that part of the budget in terms of our look for reductions. That does not mean, however, that if we were to hear that a tuition were not needed for next year, or that a child were, were going to be moved to a less costly, um, facility, that we wouldn't take advantage of something like that, a real, uh, piece of information, a fact that occurs. We got inputs from the principals and the other of us here at central office, we considered your feedback on the 30th, took very careful notes. We tried to focus on the things that seemed to be the main drivers, uh, of the budget increase that, uh, that we had. One of those things was the size of the middle school in particular, and the scope of facilities, particularly thinking about the high school fields, the enrollment growth, which in the coming year is going to be at the secondary level, that very large class in grade six, and a pretty big bump up at grades, um, seven, uh, excuse me, nine through 12 as well. And we looked also where we thought there were unacceptable levels of service. You know, uh, we can think about level service, but that assumes kind of that the level is an okay level, uh, that we want to preserve, and that we can survive with preserving, but what if it isn't an acceptable level of service? And what if there are unmet or undermet needs? So we considered all of those things. And in the end, for us, what level of service is acceptable to best meet the identified needs and reflect the school committee adopted budget guidelines, because we always go back to those guidelines just as a, kind of a check and a balance. So, savings. Now, as I said, these were small this year, um, because they were more in the support area than in the teacher area, and changes there don't result in as many, uh, as many dollars. But we had one extended leave of absence, person who is on leave this year will continue, that was a big savings, $35,000, this was, we had this very early in the budget process. Support staff retirements, and that's mainly in this building, but, uh, savings there, as we've replaced two retirees, um, in, since January here, uh, another support staff, uh, retirement, um, and that was another 2,340. And then, uh, a teacher resignation that we became aware of, that's actually going to occur before the year ends, and so we can project for next year, uh, a person with a lower salary for that role, and then in the 2,300 account, that's the, um, department head director, the change from, um, Pam being there in her office at high school to here was another saving, so it was 54,347. Those kinds of changes occur over the course of a year, they're typical, many occur during or even after, as last year, the budget season, uh, and most of those changes result in savings, but not all. The exception would be that if someone were to retire, there are few candidates, it's a very, very small one, we sometimes would have to pay more for a new person coming aboard, but that would be rare. Then we looked at the base proposal, the base, uh, original budget proposal, and looked at other places we might find savings. Uh, I think you'll remember, perhaps it was at the Saturday meeting, uh, with the advisory committee, we talked about the gas and the thermes that we use, and how they've been budgeted in the past, and the fact that sometimes the numbers on the town side and the school side aren't exactly, uh, arrived at in the, in the same way, so we've done some investigation, and actually, um, the collaborative is, um, very much involved in doing bids that, um, everybody can participate in, and so we think that there can be a savings by reducing, um, the gas, the thermes by 10 cents a therm, and that's a savings, given how much, uh, natural gas we would use of, um, $25,000. Just over the last week, there's been a change in, um, the idea of eliminating the alarm service that we currently have townwide, and that has several components to it. One of the components is, um, phone lines that would have to be, uh, in each building, going directly to, uh, a monitor, and, um, so phone lines are costly, and as well, we'd have to hire a monitoring service, um, perhaps some of you might use those in your home or, or, or other business. We also believe that we can reduce the average driver, this is the bus driver, driver hours by, uh, from six, uh, hours a day to 25, um, five, 20.
575.
575, um, a day, and that's a savings of $20,716. And then we, um, looked at revolving accounts and where they are now, of course, they're changing, and, um, so that was a savings of 50, $50,000.
It's supposed to be 50, yeah, we got a typo there.
We're just looking at the nine, yeah, so I think the bottom line number is right.
It is. It's a typo.
So, thank you. That's $50,000. And right now, some of that, for example, could come from the pre-K account, that's an account where pretty much we know the commissions at the beginning of the year, whereas things like the athletic revolving fund, that money comes in at three different times during the year, and so, um, the, the way in which dollars come into that account is not, is not all standard. So the bottom line figure is, is fine, but the 59 should be a 50. So it would be a socio-collaborative with the natural gas bid, and the alarm project being postponed until FY16, and then the additional revenue from the revolving accounts, and we would determine more toward the end of the year, which ones we would take what amount from. And then we looked at our needs-based proposals in particular, and said, what are some things that we can take out of there? The two-tenths elementary art, we had two people at point nine, and thought, well, if we add point one to each of them, we get a few more classrooms, because as we've added a few elementary teachers over the last several years, we haven't added to the specialist staff, but the, um, the principals were convincing and feeling that they can manage with what they've got now. We do have to realize that if a full-day kindergarten project were to go forward, then specialist people as well as, uh, classroom people would need to be part of that, uh, budgeting. The half-kindergarten, you know, we, we guess every year at how many kindergarteners we, we estimated this year will have as many kindergarteners next year as we have this year, but we don't really know that, and in fact, the original census information that came out in January would indicate that the number is down. There's not always a direct correlation, however, between the census information that we get in January for, um, for births that are, are five years, hence is, um, accurate, but this is the census information for five years ago. So we would say, let's take that out, understanding that if in fact we need another kindergarten, then that would have to come from the remaining FTEs that are there in the budget. Two new high school clubs, as you remember, there were four there, two existing clubs that are funded, not funded, that are volunteer, coaches now, we left those in, but then two additional clubs that Paula can identify as clubs that, um, people are volunteering with, but we've always felt that with clubs, kids' wants and interests and needs sometimes come and go, so a club really should be established before we ask to put it in as part of the budget, so there would be two of those coming out. And the, and the last two were very reluctant, uh, we got to the point where we said, you know, we need about $200,000 more to come up with, um, a number that, uh, might be a more reasonable expectation, a number that's closer to 4% than to 5%. And so, um, the maintenance FTEs, um, we talked a lot about maintenance, we chose to keep in the custodians because of the middle We chose to keep in the custodians because of the middle school and the high school. And you saw the charts that John had, and that's where the conversation about what is an acceptable level of service really hit us hard. So we wouldn't be asking to add another maintenance person with that, but keep the custodians and the adjustment counselors, those we've wanted for years, not just because we had them before, but because we have not just needs, but growing needs in that area. And so that got us to $198,315. So in the maintenance level, we'd keep the same level of staffing we have now, including the athletic teachers at a seven-tenths full-time person, but seven-tenths is his role in athletics with the field, and the other three-tenths he does other maintenance projects at different times of the year. And certainly, it would be my recommendation that if we want to discut that restoration of that would be a high priority if we have additional personnel savings, unless, of course, unanticipated new costs should emerge. And I mention that because we're sitting on two youngsters who have applied to vocational school for whom we don't have a tuition in the budget. We didn't put a tuition in the budget for them because, you know, we're not sure whether or not they will be accepted. We know if they are accepted, then Hingham has to pay the bill. But we don't always know that, and so we have not put these two youngsters in the budget. So the total, then, if you look into those four categories, the personnel changes that we've had, which are real savings because people have changed their roles, other proposed changes such as the gas thermes and the drivers and the change in the fire alarm system and reducing the revolving accounts, and then the reductions from the list of the new needs-based proposals. So the reduction is a reduction of $366,078. The new percent of increase then is under 4.1%. In fact, it's 4.04% if these reductions were to move forward. I've taken the list that you saw before, I won't read through this, but I've just annotated it with the things that came out because people, I think, tend to be more interested in what are the new things that we had put in that we didn't want to do. And, you know, I have to say that as I looked at this budget, and John and I looked at it, and then I looked at it again over the vacation to say, you know, whose needs are we meeting here? We have needs, we think that we actually need all of these things, and all of them are important to do what we do. So how do you prioritize needs? Is one need more important than another? Well, all of you have opinions as to what the ones are that are the most important. And I guess the question becomes, then, either we fund more by peeping more in the budget or asking for more, or we fund less, but you find other things to replace the things that you think are the most important to keep. I have been very sensitive to the fact we've been asked many times to do level services, and I think Ray made a good statement about that. What are level services? I think a very good example was the example just over the last week with respect to the change in how that alarm system project is going to be looked at. Because there's an example of, doesn't affect every building, I mean, every department. It only affects those departments that have property. Over the vacation, some of you heard me complain about the elevator was down at my condo for five days, and I'm on the fourth floor. And so I got to thinking about elevators. In fact, I called Pat to ask how much money we had spent in the last year on elevators. And yes, there's an amount of, I think, $31,000 in there annually for elevator maintenance and for code things and so on, but good lord, it did not cover everything we had to spend on elevators. And I thought, well, wait a minute, how many departments have elevators? It sounds like a little thing, but those are the things that make it hard to say that finding a common percentage is the best way to do things. But I did give a lot of thought to what needs-based, what level services is. You know, does level services just mean what you have now and then you add a percentage to it? Does level services mean that we have to accommodate enrollment in somehow? Does it mean that we should include increased square footage? Are there any particular unique needs of any department, not just ours or any, that should be part of level services in some year but not in another? Does a level services consider what the current, whether the current level is acceptable or not, or maybe too much? Might be some people arguing for that. What does level services look like when we have contracts that are expiring? And of course, that's happening townwide here, but of course, not everyone works under a contract as well. What does level services look like when we're talking about departments that have no facilities? They have staff and they have expenses, but they have no property. What's level services look like for departments that don't have vehicles? We have a number of departments that have vehicles, others that don't. And increases, whether they be inflationary or code increases or whatever, they rise and fall at different rates in different departments. And what does level services look like when you have departments with or without major mandates? Whether those be laws or codes or unfunded requirements or legislative programs or whatever, they're different in all of the departments. So my feeling is that we did look very carefully at what level services is, had a hard time figuring out, but I would point out that the things we recommended reducing were things that were not, are not here this year. But certainly, that's one way to look about level services. Do we have an additional maintenance person? No. Do we absolutely need one? Yes, we do. We don't have it this year. To me, that sort of would push one thing in the other direction. What about the adjustment counselors? I think they're very much needed. They're a high priority. I would never have forwarded in a budget if they weren't a high priority. But they're not things that we have this year. So there are lots of different ways to determine what our greatest needs are, what our priorities are, how I interpret your priorities, what the building people who work for us think, and how we should determine how to cut this budget. So this is my attempt at slicing that. I respect that people have a lot of different ideas and a lot of different priorities of their own, but somehow, we have to get to a number that's reduced, and you have to determine what that number is and what should be in it, at least for now. And then we have to listen carefully to what friends on the advisory committee and the selectmen say about what their priorities are. And in the end, we'll have a budget, and it will have lots of things in it that we want and need, but it won't have everything that we want, and particularly not everything that we need. So.
Any specific questions for Dot about the revised proposal? Dennis?
So we've talked a lot about adjustment counselors over the last few years, and I note in your write-up, you had it here again tonight, about the, in the middle and elementary schools for student behavioral and family support for both proactive and reactive reasons. So I'm a big believer in an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Can you give us some idea as to perhaps what we could do, what we'd be able to do proactively with additional adjustment counselors at the elementary level that we can't do today, and whether there are any longer-term impacts or additional costs that we incur because we're not able to do those proactive things?
Well, I think there are a lot more, to things mainly providing the consistency and being able to deal with more children and more families in a consistent way and give them more services. And I think Kathy would tell you that, you know, the fact that we can deal with some of these children who have very serious, and I'm not talking in special ed now, children who have very serious social issues, families that are experiencing very, very tough times, that these aren't children all who have special needs, but sometimes that's the route they go because we don't have other services for them. So one of the big things here is that it's a special ed, that it's not a special ed services and serves a population that don't have some of the other resources. And so in some ways, are we keeping these children out of special ed? More importantly, are we putting them in a situation where they can access the education and learn and thrive?
Again, obviously, we can't do it tonight, but I think it'd be important, if it's possible, obviously, confidentially, if you will, to document things that we've done or are able to do, or things that we have not been able to do, and how that impacts those types of additional services or additional costs.
You know, I would point to, and it's not adjustment counselors, but it addresses the same kind of need, I would point to what we're doing with the transition room at the high school and how vital that has been, and that has been well documented. We get monthly reports about how many children are in or out of there. They are mainly children in the regular population of different kinds of needs, social, emotional, medical, whatever, and the good things that are going on there and the parents' reports that support that. Kathy may want to comment. Catherine Ryan is the adjustment counselor at the South School and East School, shared on some of the things that might happen at the elementary level. But I wouldn't want you to think for a minute that I'm saying this is less important, but if you say to me, cut $400,000 and try to reduce the regular ed budget and make it all sustainable, that's how I came up with this. I can't justify that this is less important than something else. But Catherine, do you?
Yeah, I think to the point of... Kathy, can you come up here? I'm sorry.
We're more upset, so.
I'd be as articulate. I think there's a couple of things in terms of needs. Yes, you could say dollars-wise, there will be more kids sent out of district because we can't maintain them. If I can be in a building and I know the kids, I can intervene early, get them community therapists, support them in the schools at a much lower cost. If I can't, and families become upset, those kids can get diagnosed in a minute, and the numbers of kids who'll be out of district that we will be paying for will increase. They have increased already over the couple of years. You know, I think that it's one thing to ask people to stretch themselves for a couple of years in a financial crisis, and I certainly have done that, enrolled, ridden up and down Main Street trying to respond to families, but you can't do that. Five years means all of the elementary kids are out, so I've only been in any building every other day. And if you have kids, we have more kids with anxiety disorders. Every time there's a school shooting, we've got more kids who won't come into the building. So I make a plan for one day, well, I'm not there the next day. Well, in a little while, families start thinking, you know what? You said you'd cover it, you can't cover it, so we're going to get our kid listed with an anxiety disorder, put him on a special ed plan, and then you get a track that increasingly becomes, the town should pay for this, the town should pay for this, the town should pay for this. Whereas in the past, I've always been able to hold pretty highly-involved kids, and I know the, I mean, I live in the community, so I know the community, I know the therapists in the area, I can work with them, and that keeps the cost down for the town. So it definitely increased, and will continue to increase, the more that you decide that that's the way it goes. Also, it's very hard, we've cut, I mean, Ellen had an incredible program of prevention in terms of second step lessons, steps to respect, a lot of pro-social programming. And we've had to cut every year because we can't maintain it with a cut step. So then you're waiting for kids to get more disruptive. And as the academics increase, you definitely get more difficulties with kids who are more, you know, more disruptive and more unhappy citizens who are saying, I want my kid to get educated. Well, if I'm there full-time in a building and a teacher's struggling with a kid, you can provide more support. If you're not, you can't. So with all due respect to Dot, and I know she's a numbers person, you know, lowering one class size as opposed to having every building have another halftime person, even with a larger class size, you can provide support. Because almost every teacher will say the reason that they leave the field is they get burnt out on high emotional kids. And if you can provide that support, and I think we could, you could manage with even higher numbers of class sizes. So to your point, Dennis, yeah, there are those things. I mean, I can tell you, you know, then there's things that you can't figure out. So, you know, every domestic violence incident in town now, the police are required to report to DCF. So DCF calls me, and I have to check on those kids. Those are not necessarily kids who are known to anybody, and it's pretty highly confidential. But that's what we're getting, you know, we're getting some of those incidents, we're getting, you know, let alone kids who just are very strapped financially, families who are very strapped financially. You know, we've got a lot of grandkids moving in with grandparents because the grandparent has the house in town. Well, that doesn't mean that they can support everything. And so I'm trying to do a lot of that regular ed stuff that is very preventative. If you can get camp scholarships, which we get for kids, you know, you support a lot of stuff. But if you don't have that, then you're waiting for things to blow up, and then it becomes special ed, and then you're going to have a nice little diagnosis, and what they're going to say is, I should now go see them and treat them every week for 30 minutes. That is the, like, formula for everybody. So then, fine, you'll increase those numbers, and then they'll say, oops, we need counselors on special ed. You know, you can do it that way. It's not, it's not efficient, it's not wise. I think it's very pound-wise and penny-wise, pound-foolish, with all due respect. I mean, it's my tax money, too, but it's not a good plan.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Well, I can tell you, I wasn't happy about this choice as a reduction because we talked about this quite a bit, and we've talked about this for years. And I would definitely support the idea that, to the extent that we realize additional savings after the budget closes and we can find a way to fund them, that I would hope we would try to do that. Because I see them as a real need. I see them as fitting within the definition of level services because in order to provide the same level of service under the circumstances, we need additional folks. It's that simple. In this instance, we need additional people. But I would open it up to any questions or comments that anyone else has on any aspect of the revised proposal or anything else on the budget. Paul?
First, I want to thank Dot for doing a tremendous job, as she always does, and I could tell she was doing the numbers and explaining, and I agree with her, that this whole thing about level services is not really defined for us. We're asked to do it, and I understand that everybody has a job to do, but in reality, listening to Kathy, I, you know, I feel, you know, part of my obligation on this committee is to, is to, is to at least advocate for the people that are affected by what Kathy had to say. And I would, you know, recommend and I would certainly support including it in our budget proposal, not just looking for it later on and however this plays out. But it's sometimes, you know, we're a wonderful town, and we just, I just don't, we just have sometime have to look beyond level services at some point, and we have to take care of these kids because no one else will if we don't. And I, and I still firmly believe, and I know I've been told differently, but I think that there's money there for these kids, you know, and I look at the forecasting, it's a very conservative approach, and to leave these kids behind after we reimburse millions of dollars into the, into the general fund because we didn't have $112,000 to take care of these kids that we've been trying to take care of them for years. I haven't been on the committee that long, but I just think we have to do it. And I think that, you know, it is tough to prioritize, and I know people have different jobs to do in this town, but at least as a member of the school committee, I would advocate to, to at least, you know, I'd like to do more. I'd like to have a lot more on that budget for the kids, but I think we should include something, that $112,000 for those adjustment counselors.
Anyone else?
I'll just, I, I, thank you for what you said, Paul, but I just wanted to also add to this whole level services discussion. I re-looked at some of the enrollment issues after I had studied it when we were reviewing, doing an update on the master plan review. And one of the things I found is that of the 10 years ago, when the formal studies were done, where we are today with the number of students we have, we are, we've exceeded what those studies had done and are just on, on... what those studies had done and are just on, on another one. And one of the key elements that we looked at when trying to do our own prediction five years ago was birth rate, but then also home sales. And birth rates, and I got some updated numbers, and birth rates have leveled off in town, but home sales have been steadily picking up since 1989, or since 2009, and are getting back into those higher levels of home sales and turnovers of when we've had these peaks in classes. And there is still development going on in town with, the shipyard is still, has units, the weather vane at Chestnut Gardens, Derby Brook, Damon Farm down on, that's at Queen Anne's Corner. And what I've found anecdotally is that just because of these condos, it doesn't necessarily mean that there are children moving into them. But because of the older population in town, it's the older population that live in the single-family units that are then moving to these condo units, and that frees up a home for families to move into. So I really don't, you know, looking at where the home trends have, the sales have been going and the economy's picking up, we're still going to be selling a lot of houses in Hingham, and that's bringing in kids. So maybe the enrollment at the elementary levels started leveling off a little bit, but I don't see any nosedive. I don't see any decline. And, you know, we have to really look at the enrollment and maintain services for this enrollment. It's definitely not going away. And as we move the populations into the middle school and the high school, you know, I think the kindergarten in the future, that, my gut reaction, my gut feeling from looking at the numbers and where we were before, it's going to pick up again. So I thank Dot for really looking at this and preserving the middle school and the high school. I am disappointed in the adjustment counselors. I do think we need to look at, how do we fit that in? But I also feel that I don't know enough about the whole townwide budget. And so how we can fit into the bigger part of the pie, I don't have enough information about that. So I look forward to getting some reaction from selectmen, the advisory committee, think this is, it's great that we're doing our part. And how we fit these adjustment counselors in, I don't know. I'd like to hear from others. But the other effort, I think, is a good effort. So for me, I am concerned about, the enrollment is there, and we have these kids to take care of, and the challenges are very different of what families are going through. And so that's, I don't know. But I do want to know more about where the town is with everything, too.
Carol.
So Dot, John, thank you for this. Trying to be a team player, I was very ready to endorse your recommendations, but I have found Kathy to be very persuasive in her description of what daily life is like at two elementary schools. I have a hard time at the end of the day cutting out $112,000 when I know for the past few years, the town puts hundreds of thousands, million dollars back into fund balance. So it's a challenge for me to say we shouldn't fund these positions when I suspect there will be a way to fund them when we get to June 30th. So perhaps a proposal is, I mean, I think, and Paul is very eloquent in his discussion of this as well, maybe there may be some interest on this board for carving this number out of the total of 366. I don't know. I think I would be interested in doing that. Thank you, Kathy. Your words really touched me.
Carol, thank you for your comments. I don't know if that was a proposal you were making, but I was just going to offer my comments before I get into the proposals. So I like to take everything as the big, you know, big picture move in. Yes, I'm very disappointed about the adjustment counselors, but before I get into that, from where I sit, there's a part of me that's very happy. The reason why I say that is last year, we went in front of the town, asked for an extra million bucks. We got $850.00. This year, we're asking for $2 million. And if the numbers are right, if we only ask for a million, in theory, the budget would be balanced. So on those things, we're already up at that million-dollar mark. So that's more than last year. Things I think about is like, when I saw the number, our reduction, and I think Dr. Val you did a very good job of trying to get the number lower, in my mind, because I like to stay consistent, I was hoping for our reduction to be $500,000. And where I'm coming with that number is if we always argue that, you know, right now, a projected shortfall of a million, I think if we are consistent and we could get to that number of being less $500,000, that would give us some more credibility of trying to work, you know, for when we ask for more, we're also willing to give back more. Now, in terms of the adjustment counselors, what I like to see is, maybe not two, but let's at least put in one, because even if two of the schools now had full-time ones and one of the schools shared, still, half of our elementary school population is better off next year than it was this year. So even if we take a baby step of getting half. In terms of coming, one thing I'm really not in favor of is trying to take money from the bus drivers. I'm worried about, I don't know how the actual mechanics work there. I don't know whether they punch time cards or whatever, but I'm worried about 15 minutes of them, a quarter of one hour, 15 minutes, could lead them to either speeding quicker or racing or something like that. And for $20,000 with 2,000 kids in our bus system over 180 days, to me, off the top of my head, it's just not worth it. But that's me. I could be completely wrong. Where I do see some things where I would think that would be good possibly to get, instead of going for more cuts, I was thinking, just I look at the revolving accounts and the thing that John gave us on January 27th to 28th meeting, even at the end of 14 and the end of 15, the revolving accounts have basically about a million-one, million-two in them. We have increasing enrollment, so a lot of our fees are going to go up in theory, a lot of our revenues. You know, right now, when I was running, we're going to have something like, I did the numbers, with all the kids in the high school next year, even on, even at 70%, and not including what the extra kids pay for hockey, it's like $277,000. We're going to have more kids in driver's ed. So in summary, what I am thinking is, I would like to see at least one adjustment counselor. I personally think that it would be a good signal to the town if right now, there's a hypothetical million-dollar shortfall. If we got to that $500,000 number, then that looks like we're half the budget. We go from there. I think we could take from the revolving, and I would not take from the bus drivers. And so on the back of an envelope, it looks like we would increase our revolving contribution from $50,000 to $250,000 for next year.
I just wanted to comment on the bus driver. That figure came as John looks, as he always does at every single section of the budget at the end of the year, and so that we weren't expending, we had overages. And when you translate that to an hourly, it doesn't mean that every bus driver is going to lose a quarter of an hour, but when you translate, that budget seemed to be more than we were expending. And if you translate that number of dollars, given the hourly rate, into an average payout, that's how that came. It didn't, it wasn't a figure saying, "Let's, you know, reduce the bus drivers." So...
The reason why I got that was from the .25, and then you specifically said six hours to 545. So I'm thinking they're racing back.
No, no, no. For the past couple of years, we've had, the budget for drivers has come in with a positive variance. So, you know, when I look at that, and that's, the budget assumption has always been about six hours a day, and you look at it on average, it's more like...
It was just a way of making the number look meaningful to you.
If you take the assumption and you make it 5.75, it cuts off 20,000, but it's still healthy. And I would never ask the bus drivers to speed or, you know, not their time. Plus, adding the extra bus helps that. You know, we did add an extra bus, so that helps the overall time for all of the bus drivers, you know, so...
But Joan, one thing I worry about...
Based on a positive variance in the past.
Is that if, just from your example, that they're working six hours a day now, and they would be possibly cut back to 575, if the economy continues to grow and more jobs, I'm worried about we losing some of our reliable staff because they can get jobs at eight hours, nine hours possibly more money. So I'm a little sensitive to the transportation people.
They get paid for the time they're there, though, Andy. It's not like, it's not like if they're, you know, they get paid for the time of their run for the most part. They don't sit around and say, "I got 15 more minutes to stay here." So...
It was probably a very bad example to give. We should have simply stuck with the positive variance and we're trying to be honest about what we need, and this didn't seem to be good.
What I was saying there is that I can change the budget assumption conservatively from six hours to 5.75 because the past couple of years, I've seen that there's a variance there. And I would expect that the timing of the bus drivers, and since we did add a new bus, will stay about the same as it has over the past couple of years.
And we do intend, and we said this when we put the $50,000 in for revolving, that we want to look at that again, but we want to look at it when we have all of the revenue in. I think one of the important things is that when you look at a budget, and if you remember the pie charts, and I've got them, but I won't bother to put them up. So we have the pie chart, and we have the 82% that's in salaries. Then we have this little piece of the pie that's in contractual kinds of services. And then we have that tiny little piece of the pie that's everything else. And so if we have, and this is what we thought about, and it's a point that I think someone in the advisory could maybe made when we met on the Saturday, if you look at something that is so bound with fixed costs and contractual costs and salaries of fixed costs, and then you have the amount of variability that we have in our budget, whether it's people coming in and out, youngsters moving in and out, things breaking down or not, the elevator giving us problems or not, when you look at all of that variability and you're so locked into just this little piece of the pie to deal with it, we have to be very careful about those revolving accounts because there are times that, you know, we have something that breaks at the high school, and we say, "Okay, that's something that we can attribute to the building and grounds fees that we have coming in." So we have a lack of reliability for the coming year anyway, in terms of how much is coming into those revolving accounts, particularly around the fees and the rentals and all of those things. We're down this year. We're down next year. Really, no matter what we charge ultimately, because we don't have, we don't have the experience. We have more properties, and we have properties that at the moment can't be used. Middle school will be a good example coming up. We're not going to be able to use the middle school fields. So that those are uncertain in terms of their status right now, within a year, many of them. And they're the only places that we can go when those unexpected things happen. So for me, looking at a budget that has still 7.5% increase in personnel in it, I believe that we need to have all of those people. On the other hand, I get worried that we have things that go wrong every single day. And we don't, we'd be sitting at the advisory committee's door once a week looking for funds. And I think we'd be told, wait till the end of the year and, you know, and see what happens. And lots of times, the things that happen are difficult. So, you know, we have a situation, boiler situation at the high schools unresolved at this point. We know what our capital budget this year. It's not what we had hoped, but it's going to buy us a lot of things that we need. We have the vocational tuition. We have so many things that are variable that if we put everything into tuitions and other contracted services, whether it's transportation or the cleaning company or that is going to clean the mess in the boiler room or whatever, if we put all of those things there and we have no accounts that have more flexibility in terms of using money across the course of the year, we couldn't, we couldn't survive in that kind of a... So I think we have to be cautious in just looking at total dollars in revolving. I think John and I both said, we think that there's some more dollars. We don't want to tell you which accounts they should be coming out of at this point. I don't know, there's $100,000 more. And I guess I would, I would have a hard time, or 200, if you...
Or 200. And I'd just like to kind of point out, I think the suggestion that's laying out there that we could easily come up with another $200,000 out of the current revolving accounts and throw it onto this budget as an offset is a little irresponsible because these are revolving accounts. Money comes in, money goes out, money's earmarked for certain things. We have things earmarked as offsets right now, and we also have another year where we're going to have a decreased amount of revenue coming in for the use of our fields. So I think there's still some unknowns out there. And I think, you know, I talked to John, we met last week, and I said, "Can we come up with some more money out of revolving? Can we take a closer look at the building revolving account? Can we look at this? Can we look at that?" And he said, "Yeah," and they did. And they went back and looked closer at it. But if we were to try to take that additional amount, that could easily put us in a position where something could come up, as Dot suggests, in the middle of the year, and we wouldn't be able to cover it. We'd have to go to the selectmen and advisory for a reserve fund transfer. They'd say, "Come back to us at the end of the year," and we'd see if we could manage.
One example of that is the south school phone wiring. You know, when we put the new phone system in, that the rooms will have to be rewired. That's a big-ticket item. That's $20,000 to $30,000.
In addition to the cost of...
In addition to the cost of the phone system, which will come out of capital, you know.
Dennis.
Dennis.
Yeah. So perhaps I'd go on record in terms of the adjustment counselors, as I started the conversation there. You know, two years ago, we said that was something we felt we needed to do, and it didn't work, you know, we didn't feel we could put it in. And then last year, we said it was something we needed to do, but we put back the assistant principals. Hearing Kathy talk about the continuity in a building, and I've heard it from the assistant principals, you know, it's very difficult to do a program or to keep a program going. You say, "Okay, you started today, and then you're not there tomorrow, and then you come back on Wednesday, and you're not there on Thursday," and so forth. So I believe, and I, that the $112,000 needs to be in the budget, whether there's something else that we think we can take out, that's something. But, you know, when you see the light at the end of the tunnel and it turns out to be a train coming the other way, you can only live with that for so long. So I think it's time to fully staff the adjustment counselor position in all the elementary schools. It would be my inclination to put that $112,000, $214, back in the budget. But if we, and I hear Andy talking about at least one of those two positions.
We did talk about that, by the way. So finish your thought.
Yeah. So, I mean, one or the other, I personally, both need to be in. But, you know, if we feel that there's something else that needs to come out, I'm not asking you to say what that would be right now, but, you know, either we would vote for the additional $112, $214 to go back in, we'd vote for some lesser number. But in my opinion, those two positions need to go back in, need to be funded for next year.
I would say that if you're, if you want to fund those for next year, that we should do both.
Can you expand on that? Because you said you thought about one...
We talked, we had a discussion at administrative council about that, and I asked that question. Well, you know, what about one? Well, can we use extra hands? Yes, we can, but it leaves at least one building in the compromised situation of having to share people or having half of what the other buildings all have. And so the principals were then looking at other ways that you might use a person. Well, what if you had one person be a roving person who took over all of the teaching piece, and then, then the people that were in the building would be full-time where they are? And someone made a very good comment about that notion, and that was that, you know, this is, we've always said from day one, this should be a regular ed service. And it doesn't mean that there aren't children with special needs who see adjustment classes, but it really is a regular ed kind of service. And the fact that they do teaching is a way that the principals believe that they get to know the greater population, and they get to know that general ed population. They get to find candidates for some of the groups that they, that they form, social groups, and what typical children might be in those groups, either as kind of peer models or as children that have issues themselves. So... So, so their, their thinking was, we really need the two. And needing the one, can, you know, are you going to ever turn down staff? But if you're saying, making a choice between a classroom teacher and, and an adjustment counselor, the three in four schools is still undesirable sharing. And we made that compromise back when we built East School, where we took out all of those things, that we were going to have one of everything in each of four schools. And because we were asked to reduce that override significantly, all of those things we took away. And we still are sharing. And we're sharing with music teachers, and we're sharing with Spanish teachers, and we're sharing with adjustment counselors. And so we need to get rid of the sharing and staff those schools properly. So, so my recommendation is that if it's something that you want back in there, and obviously there's a lot of thought for it, and I'm not against it, believe me, I'm not against it. I, you know, and you can say, I'm a numbers person. Well, I am a numbers person. I look carefully at the numbers that I'm asked to produce, but I'm a people person too. And so I certainly do understand the need. But if it's the right thing to do for some kids, it's the right thing to do for all kids, I guess.
And I just want to say, Ray, that, you know, and I didn't perhaps preface my comments as I should have. I mean, I know, having been on advisory, I know the tremendous amount of work that goes into these budgets and trying to figure it out, and trying to balance it out and weigh and measure and those kinds of things. And, you know, I'm in no way belittling or discounting the amount of work that went into decisions.
No, I didn't. You weren't the one who said the numbers. But somebody else said that.
And, and discounting the effort. And I think you said it very well, Dot, that, you know, everybody has opinions and priorities and whatever they go into it. And I think this is, this is the time for us to express those, you know, here on the school committee and make that direction. So, again, I think we've lived, we've lived without in that particular area for long enough. I think there are negative effects. I think there are, as we talked about, proactive things that can be done that in the long run saves, not only saves the town money, but to Paul's point, saves kids. And I don't, I don't want to see us jeopardize that.
Yeah. Paul.
Just to be clear, when, when I was speaking about numbers, and I say this not, maybe you don't have to say it, but I want to make sure it's clear, I wasn't referring to you, Dot. I was referring to you initially, that you had to come up with the numbers initially. And I, I sensed that you wanted, if, if things could be right, so to speak, that you'd want them in there. And in terms of, you know, I won't get into it now, but I certainly wasn't referring, and other, other groups involved that have to work numbers themselves, and I respect what they do, but I really wasn't referring to you.
I appreciate that.
Ed. There's advantage when to be candid, when you last get a chance to pick good ideas from other people. I think Paul hit the nail on the head when he used the term obligation. When I look at this, this pie chart, this very, very small pie chart, the five areas of saving, they all concern me. I'm particularly concerned about the reduction in the, in the maintenance, the new maintenance. But I would absolutely support the add back or the reappropriation of the two elementary adjustment, adjustment counselors.
I think it's a quarter percent. Is that about right?
It's ADAC.
Yeah. It's about a quarter percent.
You know, and we, we put on the same page, I put on the same page right next to one another. The adjustment.
Point two six.
The adjustment counselors and, and maintenance. And I wouldn't want anyone to think that, you know, we value things more than we value kids. But we have cut for maintenance, our buildings are getting in less repair. So we haven't, over the years, we've tried to add, to take care of kids first, classroom teachers, and last year it was the assistant principals. And so we have tried to respond to kids' needs. They're always first. But, and this is the first time that we advocated for a maintenance person, but I don't see it as a choice certainly between one being more important than another. But we addressed many of the student needs, not all, but we have an adjustment.
So, back of the envelope, if we were to retain the two adjustment counselors of 112,214, that would be an additional 0.26% over the proposed increase of 4.04, so it would be 4.30.
Yeah, it's a two points, it would round up to 2.7, so.
Closer to 4.31.
Yeah. I can figure that out exactly if you'd like.
I suspect that's not going to change anybody's mind that's proposing to support that.
Right. Well, here's, here's the, the important thing is that, look, I think we're all in agreement about the adjustment counselors to some extent, okay? You know, Carol and I met with John and Dot, or John, and talked about this, and we were not happy about cutting the adjustment counselors because that's something we know is a real, a real need. And Kathy, I thank you for coming tonight and for speaking. If, you know, we vote tonight, and then it's out of our hands, okay? But what happens after tonight is the vote of a number. And if the number is something other than what we decide, we then have a choice to change our minds or not, and we've done that in the past. And I think the three boards can work together to get to a point where we have a budget that is appropriate for everybody. And if it turns out that we need to make a choice about something else, you know, we're funding the positions, not the, right? They decide the dollars, we decide the positions. So if we're, if we're standing up tonight and saying, we want the adjustment counselors in the budget, that's a number, that number may have to come out elsewhere. We'll have to see. But I would agree with, I think, what we have a consensus of to retain the two adjustment counselors.
And I think it's important to move forward with a number. And know where we stand and what everybody else thinks about that.
So, I mean, John can, unless there's any other comments or questions.
I'd like to just, just on the thing about the number. And it's always been the number, but I've always had reservation on the, just the number. Because to me, just seeing all the advisory committee people here, why, you know, we're trying to go through and make cases for why we want certain people. If it's all just about a number, then why don't we just tell them from the day one, it's 44 million or whatever? I mean, so can, can you expand more why it's, we're voting a number, not what's actually in this budget?
Well, we are voting what's in the budget.
But you said that the other day, it's a number, though.
Let me take a shot, let me take a shot at that, Andy. So what, what I was saying, as I was alluding to, my comment is, as far as I'm concerned, those two adjustment counselors should be in the school system next year. If, if the town decides to vote a number somewhat, you know, lower than the number, it sounds like we may be voting in a few minutes, we can direct that those two positions will be in the budget, and that money will just have to come out from somewhere else. So the town votes a number, you know, and my, if I ended up right, it would be, if we include those, 43,647,23, but, okay. If they choose to say it's going to be something less than that, it doesn't mean we don't, we're prohibited from putting adjustment counselors back in. It just means that we will allocate, if we say that needs to be in there, that we'll have to allocate dollars.
Someplace else.
Differently. But I don't, but I don't want to say that right now and say, oh, okay, let's put the buses in and take this out and whatever. But that's, that's the response.
It's a long time to go.
But I mean, I guess when I think about things, this whole process is a bunch of checks and balances. You know, that's why we have AdCom. And hypothetically, we put in something XYZ, and we want that, but then, you know, AdCom, AdCom decides, in their opinion, that's a, a want and really just a need. And then all of a sudden, we redo our stuff and get it back. That's why I have, I have a little hard time just saying we're voting a number instead of voting what's in our budget book.
Well, you are voting, you are voting.
So, Andy, so I, I think the answer is that we rely on the educators to tell us what they need to run the school system and what's, what, what level of services they think is appropriate, okay? However you, you define that. It's up to us to determine from a policy standpoint what we think that should entail. And we've talked a lot about the different things that go into that. And tonight, we focused on adjustment counselors. The advisory committee recommends a number to town meeting. Doesn't go into detail about what that number entails or what's part of that number. And there, you know, for the most part, are not educators on the advisory committee. And they don't get into the particulars of curriculum and educational recommendations. It's the finances. I mean, like last year, we saw a number of changes after the budget closed to the positive because of retirements that were unanticipated. There were a number of things that were originally excluded from funding. We were able to fund those things because we had some savings. In addition to that, because of additional savings, we were able to return a whole lot more to the town's bottom line. But those, those decisions were, so the number was funded. We didn't have to go back to anybody and say, can we fund this teacher position that we felt should have been funded educationally, right? So I understand the numbers work.
I feel very strongly about this. And I think we, I had several slides, and we spent some time on this on the Saturday meeting, because I think there was a lot of misunderstanding about it. So I'm not sure if you were there at that meeting, but what happened last year is that you voted a budget and all of the things that were in it. So the school committee took a vote, and their first vote last year, and it had all those very specific things in it. The advisory committee and the selectmen voted a different number. School committee came back again and was faced with saying, well, we're just going to go to town meeting. Or saying, you know what, we're all team players here, we've always found a number that's worked before, we'll work within this. So the second vote was a vote to reduce the bottom line. The second vote was not a vote to take out the things that AdCom had suggested as the basis for the number they came up with. I mean, they don't just pick numbers out of the air, they come up with some rationale, and they said, we see these as level services and these not. So your first vote included everything that we had recommended and everything that we ultimately had. That was all authorized, not just by the bottom line number, but by the vote. The second vote was to reduce the bottom line so that it would be in line with what advisory and the selectmen had voted. And that's what we did. And we said at the time, both John and I said at the time, and it was a public meeting, that our hope would be that there might be some changes that would allow us to restore some of those things that have been cut. And in fact, that was true, we were able to. So, so if you vote this number tonight with the adjustment counselors in, as far as I'm concerned, they're in. And if there's a different vote that ends up at some point down the line, then I'm left with, you know, finding a way to make that number work, but within, but make it work with the things that you voted to be in it.
Okay. Anything else from the committee?
Since advisory has been, opinion has been asserted a few times. I'm Laura Marwell, I'm the chair of the education subcommittee. And it is true, last year, that there was a second vote. And I think that there's an understanding on advisory that we do our best to understand your priorities, and we, we do arrive at a number. But it isn't an uninformed number. And I think that it is important that a budget has integrity, and that when you, when you vote a budget, we, we do sort of try to be endorsing a program that we think the school has, has put forward and that we have tried to fund as best we can. And I think there's an understanding that within the number, if we make an, you know, an error, or if you decide, if you change your priorities, for example, if, if you decide at some point an elementary teacher is more important than adjustment counselor, you can do that. But I do think that the idea that if you find extra dollars after the budget has been voted, that they can be applied to your budget, you know, I think now and again could happen. I don't think we would want it to be a, a practice. And the reason is, if it went the other way around, you know, certainly you'd have to come back to advisory to ask for extra dollars. So I think it, it works both ways. If, if after the budget's voted, you come up with extra dollars, I think there should be a conversation before, before the, a program that wasn't discussed as part of the budget is endorsed. So that's just an advisory committee perspective.
Okay. And I would just remind, and that's a very good point and very well taken, and I would just remind the committee that the school committee is statutorily empowered and authorized to spend the dollars that are appropriated as it sees fit, operating and capital. No other department in town is so empowered or authorized. So. Liza.
I would like to propose, just trying to stick with the original dollars, that I agree with putting the adjustment counselors back in, but could we, even as a show of good faith, take out the additional high school activities advisor stipends and the coaches' salaries? Just if we're getting a, trying to balance a number and trying to balance the highest priorities of taking care of our kids and teaching them, and just as an effort to...
Where are you getting those numbers from?
I don't even know what the numbers are, but they...
They're small numbers.
Yeah, they are small numbers, but just...
Comparatively small numbers, I think you commented about them before, but those are, I think those are enrollment related.
Well, that's why we left them in, we've had constant concerns about growing enrollment and not having those things, but, but they are small numbers.
I would agree. If they were an offset, if they were an equal number, if they were, then we could certainly be talking about it. But if it's, it's, I think they're very small dollars, and I don't know if something like that make, would make a difference. And I don't know if even a small gesture like that is a good faith showing. Paul.
And I appreciate Liza's efforts, but my, my position would be that I don't want to unintentionally take away from other worthy, you know, folks that the administration, and I, maybe myself anyway, the school committee possibly, would think are worthy or deserving of, in need of, of being funded. So I, just to be clear, I only speak for myself. I would not look to cut somebody else out, you know, necessarily to, to fund the, the counselors. If advisory or the selectmen, as they're supposed to do, if they have other ideas, I would hope that Kathy would sway, you know, to, to think about that, this stuff, and I know you do anyway, but it was certainly important to hear her. And so, I just, I wouldn't want to go in a different direction and cut, even though I understand why you, you propose it.
I would second that, Paul. So I would actually propose, I think the administration's original number that you were proposed cutting was 366,078. I would propose that we cut, just so we can see where we all stand, that we reduce the budget by 253,864, which would restore the two adjustment counselors.
Which, which I believe is, is 43,647,23.
640 what?
721. 721.
I think it's 721.
Dennis, do that from the beginning, 43...
John, you, I know you're...
I got the same number, Dennis, it's the 43,647,23.
723.
There's a couple dollars rounding in there, so that's, but, you know.
I'm rounding.
So that would be my motion.
I would second that. And just, again, not to belabor the point, but, you know, I, I think that, you know, we are talking about a quarter of a million dollar reduction from where we started, which is not insignificant. So, you know, I think we are making a good faith effort to, to get to where we need to be with the town without hopefully jeopardizing the, the level of services that we're providing to the town.
Any other discussion? Andy.
So, just for clarity, again, you know, I recommend, I support increases for us. I do think we should do... I do think we should do more. And one thing, but I'm not going to stand in the way of that because as Ray you articulated, once we vote this number, it takes on a different life and it might get passed or they might come back to us. But one thing, when I talk about the revolving accounts, why, conceptually, why I think we could do more from that is this. And Dr. Gill, I try not to, I rely on you and your staff to tell us what's the most important things. But earlier tonight, we were talking about the special education reserve fund. And in that document, we were using a 2% reserve, which is, John says, the cap, 2% cap, which is like 700 odd, 700 odd thousand net. Our revolving accounts, at the end of the year and at the end of next year, based on the numbers John gave us, will be approximately 1.1 and 1.2 million. So when I think, again, sitting from where I sit, I like to have consistency. We also, everyone supported the concept of the 2%, or of this reserve fund for special ed with a 2% cap. So when I look at our revolvers up around 3%, I think they should be in line. But again, I'm going to support this budget, but that's my thinking, that's my methodology. When I see a million one, million two there, at the same time, we're discussing something that would have a 2% cap, which is about 750,000, I think there should just be more in line. But again, I'm going to support this because it takes on a different life.
Anyone else? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And he opposed. And Kathy, for the record, that's how you get something done.
Yeah.
No, I'm just, it's something we all wanted to do, but your presence here tonight, I think, helped us do the right thing.
It's like being at town meeting, Kathy, when you go in and you think you know how you're going to vote. And then you hear some speaker get up who has a lot more information and persuades you to think about the problem differently. That's what you did tonight.
Do we, I have a question. Do we have any idea of when the meetings with advisory and the selectmen are scheduled for?
So as of now, the selectmen had been talking about voting on the 27th. I'm not sure if that is going to still be the case. Education Subcommittee meets tomorrow night to discuss their recommendation to the full advisory committee. Advisory, then, next Monday, I believe, is going to hear that recommendation. And on Tuesday, they're going to vote all the budgets. That's the plan as of now. That is subject to change. Everything is fluid. There may be a benefit to delaying it a couple of days. It depends. The selectmen's vote may push to next week. I don't know. Irma doesn't know.
I'm thinking it would be best to push it to next week. I'm really happy I came tonight to hear the whole discussion.
So that's that's what the schedule is. It's subject to change.
I'm sure Paul and Bruce are watching out there on television.
We have a little bit of leeway, a little bit of leeway in the original timing because town meeting is a week later this year. So than than it was last year. Last year was early. This year, it's later. So, you know, you've also got the town forum coming up. So that's where we are as of now. I talked to Ted as recently as Friday. Their numbers were still fluid. He was waiting on some information on health insurance figures today. I didn't hear from him. I don't know what the answer is on that. There's a lot of things that are still in flux.
8.6.
And just after today, to the extent that I learn information, I will share it with you individually as I can. All right. Yeah, moving on to Capitol. So we don't have to make this a long conversation. We don't have to get into a lot of detail. Just to say that we didn't get everything that we asked for. I think Dennis did a terrific job representing us during a number of sessions with Capitol Outlay and and conversations with with the chair, Ray Eisenbees. And the handout you got, which is color coded, the red items are things that were not funded by Capitol Outlay. I would point out that what remains in here, at least as of tonight, is the $50,000 for the fire alarm call boxes. Because I was advised over the weekend to take the operating money out, but to leave the Capitol money in for now because they may choose to keep that in for this year. We'd make that expenditure in this fiscal year and then the operating costs would come out in the fiscal year. That is still a decision that's in flux as well. That's subject to change. I think Capitol is meeting again on Wednesday evening. There may be further information known that night about it. So that's, that's where we stand.
So question, Dennis. If the 50,000 for the Capitol for the fire testing comes out, any likelihood that the foster play shed money might be put in? Because I do think there is a question of this being a safety issue.
We asked that.
Funny you should ask. When I got the call from Ray informing me that it looked like they were going to put off for a year, the the change, the fire department monitoring, and he said, so therefore we, you know, his understanding was that the 50,000 should come out. I said, well, do you think since Capitol had made the recommendation that the 2. whatever million dollars townwide was, that they felt that was affordable? That could we, would they then be in a position to put in the 50? It just so happens that the 50,000 dollars of foster shed was exactly the same amount as the other. And we, when we were there, we presented to them that there were, based on what the structural engineers came back on, that there were some structural issues affecting that. And he said that they, if we, if we've made that request, that they would meet again and discuss it. But he also said that, you know, if they discuss it, they will review not just us, but the whole budget. So it may well be, yes, they felt the 50,000 dollars to stay in, but it would, should be spent somewhere else. Or that the total budget being recommended to the selectmen and ultimately advisory would be reduced by 50,000. So so it did already come up, and I think they are planning to to have another meeting. So, you know, if you all can see in the red, what John has shown you has been reduced from the budget as of now. If we feel that that is our highest priority, should they be willing to keep the total allocation at the level they've already recommended? I think we would need, it would be good to have some sense for that and then we could say to them, that would be our request. But that was what I indicated to them, based on what I knew, that that would probably be our request.
Yeah.
Do we know that they kept, do we know that the reason for perhaps keeping it in Capitol and taking it out of operating is that in order for the whole thing to happen, you might have to have the equipment in place and then for the following fiscal year?
Right.
Yeah, so, so, so I'll tell you, I was told by the vice chair of advisory to leave it in. I don't think there's any good reason for it as of tonight. And in fact, that may change in two days. So I think it was just based on information that was coming in fluidly on Friday and Saturday morning. You know, I know advisory had a discussion about this on Thursday evening. I received a forward of an email about it. I had a discussion with Ted on Friday about it. I had a discussion with Mary Power about it on Saturday morning. And based on that last discussion that I had, we said, let's leave it in for now and we'll see. I know Capitol's meeting again this week and they'll come to a decision. I think that what you're guessing is part of it, that that the infrastructure would be, do that ahead of time and then, but I don't know. I would also guess that if, if, you know, we don't have to keep it in, that they're not going to let us keep the 50 for something else. Just right.
Yeah, no, and again, clearly Ray indicated what I just told you guys, that there would be, there's no commitment of that.
I mean, I think, you know, we've been, we've been talking about the foster shed. Two years ago, we met there with with parents and administrators and we looked at that. You know, the other things, the ovens that don't hold temperatures and, you know, we could go into detail about them. We don't have to. But I think, you know, it totals about, what, 180 to 190,000 dollars that we're not getting. But, you know, we are getting a significant number. So I am pleased that we will be able to to do a number of things this year. And stay tuned because there's changing information daily, apparently.
Okay.
We have to vote on this? We do not have to vote on it. I mean, it's, 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 you know, a prior recommendation that we had submitted and this is essentially the result of what the Capitol Outlay Committee has told us.
Just reading the agenda, it said to take action. That's the only reason why.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't think we need to...
Not to vote on the bottom line, because they vote on the bottom line.
Right.
But if you were to...
If there was something else we wanted to do, if we wanted to go back to them and make a case about a particular item further than we haven't already, I think we've, we've taken a couple of good runs at them on some of these things. And they're not insensitive to our, our arguments and our needs. But, you know, to some extent, the Capitol Outlay Committee is is constrained by the amount of money that's allocated. And when a decision was made a number of years ago to fund Capitol projects out of operating, you know, in no year have we, we used or been able to spend the $2 million allocation that's put into the forecast each year. This year, we are, I think, going to spend 2 million, and I think we're actually going to exceed it out of a tax levy. And I think that's a good thing because I think it's, it's, we need to invest in in those capital items.
And, excuse me, and just for the edification of the rest of the committee, not only will is the recommendation, I think, 2.2 million this year out of operating, but there's also a Warren article to spend money out of debt service for fire equipment, which is the first time that's been done in recent history. So there's a recognition, and I think an appropriate recognition, that you can't finance all of Capitol requirements out of the operating budget. You know, when you have to replace a roof or you have to, you know, do other major things.
Two fire engines.
Yeah, two fire engines, you know, whatever. You can't all of a sudden say, one year, okay, well, there's a new roof on town hall is going to cost, I'm making this up, a million dollars. And by the way, there's a roof that has to be put on the high school and that's a million and a half dollars, you know, so that's two and a half million dollars. Plus, we still have to do technology and we still have to do police cruisers and whatever. So I think there's a recognition that doing everything out of operating, the operating budget, is not realistic in the long term, that there are times when we'll need to fund it otherwise. So I think we're clearly moving in the right direction. And that, and that's good, I think, ultimately be good for the school department, but, but most importantly, good for the town.
Any other questions on Capitol? Okay. All right, we have a revision to the bullying policy to take up.
All right, you do have the memo on that. This would be the first reading. The vote then would be intended to occur at the March 12th meeting. So between now and then, if there were comments, we would want to hear them, Andy and the policy committee or me. I think it's important to make clear that this law, which amended the bullying policy that referred to bullying among children, this law was amended to include adults in a school setting, who could be teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, whomever in a school setting as, and the term is aggressor, could be aggressors in a bullying situation. And when the vote was, was taken by the legislature, it became effective almost immediately. And so certainly, we started the year with all of our staff being very aware of the bullying law and how it's changed and that being part of our training. So certainly, we have been implementing, I can think of two situations where this was a possibility of a, of an allegation. So we've been implementing it all along, but paperwork takes a while to catch up sometimes. And that's what this would do, would be to correct our policy handbook and, and then all of the things that are published annually, that were published last year before we became aware of this, like the discipline code and all the school handbooks, will follow suit. So this would be the first of several changes. Those, of course, don't require a vote, but this policy would set the tone for what those other changes will be.
The big thing, Ray, is that we had to do it. The nice thing is, we didn't have, we copied and pasted our actual procedure. The procedure of bullying of students by staff is the same as student on student. That's a law and had to be done. So this is your first reading. If anyone has any comments, suggestions, please get them to me. You know, a couple of days before, we have the, the packet is due, that 10 days from now?
Well, the packet will actually go out next Thursday.
Thursday, 10 days from now, yeah.
Yeah, I got it for my daughter.
Can we move on to 8.8 or 9? 8.8? Yeah, so the next item is, so this is something, obviously, Policy Subcommittee's looking, been looking at for a number of months. This is, goes back to the, the fees for the, for the school facilities and particularly the multipurpose field, which we voted back in October.
Right. So this was actually, you know, again, everyone got very, very excited about the fields. Came up with a policy. John did some extensive research, what area facilities charge. We, we continue to have open dialogue with our Hingham sports groups. And they said that they might, it'd be tough on their budgets. And so after we did some more research, the thing that we really tried to, tried to do was have, have everything on the same footing. We're trying to get everyone to pay the same amount or contribute the same amount. But one thing that also happened very, that happened good for us or well for us, was Margaret did outstanding job at our meeting last time because she came in with an entire calendar of the available dates. And so what we were thinking about this whole thing is, is it could be easier on a lot of the groups, instead of charging them a per rental fee, per usage fee, is to charge a per participant fee. And so hypothetically, if lacrosse, if the seventh and eighth grade division uses the high school and there's 100 kids in there, we would recommend charging, and this is just only for the spring only, a pilot program of $6 a head, and then everything would be bundled. They would be able to use the, the grass fields and when available, they'd also be able to use the turf fields. The time they would pay, though, for anything additional would be for the custodians. And so because we obviously want the fields used, but we really don't know exactly how much use is going to be there. And so we thought this was a good idea as a pilot program, and we emphasize the word pilot, that we're going to charge $6 per participant. And that's just for the Hingham kids, not for the other towns when they come in for the season. And they'll get use of the grass fields and when available, they'll get use of the, the turf field. And the nice thing is, we're going to have, Margaret's going to have a meeting with all the heads of these sports groups, and we're going to sit down with a calendar and let, you know, sign away. And we think it's going to be a good way to start off. Obviously, if anyone uses it on Saturday or Sunday, they will, they could be, they could be some custodial charges there. But we think it's a, a good starting point. And what we're recommending, and before we vote on anything, I'll turn it over to my two colleagues on the committee, is for you guys to consider accepting this pilot program to waive the, the usage fees just for the, the spring for our, our youth sports group. So Carol or, or Dennis, do you have anything else you'd like to comment on?
Well, I, I think, yeah, when we, after we, if you remember, we had to do the, put the fees in place in the fall because we were having usage in the fall, the facility was opening up. And it was always our intention to reconsider that. And we heard from the various sports groups, there was a lot of concern, current concern expressed, and it kind of dawned on me, I can't speak for Andy and Carol, but, you know, that we, the idea was to build this turf field to encourage usage, to take usage off of the grass fields as much as possible so they could, you know, breathe and be in better shape. And so the way the policy was set up, it actually discouraged use of the multipurpose field because of the, the rental structure. So as Andy said, by going to a, a... So as Andy said, by going to a, a per participant number and by having Margaret kind of block out what she was going to use for the, the school needs and say, okay, Tuesday nights from 6 o'clock to 8:30, the field's available, Thursday night, or by week, or however it's going to be, we can offer lacrosse or soccer or, or other teams like that, or there's going to be other youth sports like that, access to the, to the multipurpose field, which is good for them, it's good for the town. And also, and John spent a lot of time actually documenting what the costs are to us to maintain, both internally, I'm talking about gymnasiums and utilities and whatever, and externally, still generate about the same number of dollars we need to, to come out whole for those fields. So I think it's, it's, it's something we believe will work. We've gotten some positive feedback from the youth sports groups, and they like this better. And we just don't want to institutionalize it long-term because we want to get a season's worth of experience in the spring, and then most likely bring back to you in the fall something we go forward.
Or in the summer.
Or in the summer, yeah.
So just want to add two things. We also looked at trying to share custodian fees as much as possible, so that if soccer were on some fields and lacrosse was using the multipurpose, to the extent that, that multiple users were on the fields, rather than by the luck of the draw, somebody has to pay the custodian fee and somebody doesn't, maybe we could share that expense in including the Hingham public schools if we're getting some benefit as well. This vote would require that we suspend the previously voted fee structure for this trial basis, which applies really only to Hingham youth groups. I just, I want to just make that clear. Because there could be, potentially be another private group coming in that wants to rent a high school or the fields, and this proposal's just for Hingham youth groups. And John has, we, we have some experience with this. Hingham youth soccer pays per head as their fee. So since that seems to work so well for them and us, we thought that maybe made some sense.
That's also the structure that recreation uses.
Right. And it gets us everyone, everyone in parity.
It does.
Like, because like basketball right now pays a fortune in custodial fees, but they don't pay any rental fee.
Right.
They have made some donations in the past, but again, it's trying to get everyone on the same playing field.
I think it's, it's a good time to try it.
No pun on words.
Because the spring has fewer uses, you know, where there's not, it's not football, field hockey, so, and two soccers. So it's four high school groups. In the spring, it's just lacrosse, boys and girls. So it's a good time to try this out.
And we are also very aware of any Title IX issues. We've had that discussed at our, our meetings, especially with the sharing of custodial services, that someone, you know, would be, it will be fair, or try to be as fair as possible.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's a good idea to try it out. I think it's the right season to do it.
It is.
I think it's a good opportunity. I think it'll be interesting to see, you know, once we put something in place, you know, in the summer, looking forward to the fall, whatever that may be, whether this pilot program kind of informs that decision or, or, or not. Looking at basketball next year, you know, certainly Barker is a robust program. The gals program does not have the same level of participation. And I'm, you know, I know that the, the folks in gals express concern about having to pay more than they do now. So, you know, that's something I think we'll have to take a look at when you have a, you know, a, a similar program that just doesn't have the same level of participation, and how that would affect affordability for them. So that's something maybe to look at going forward.
Yeah, and similarly to Carol's comment, you know, if you have a, one group that, that uses the facilities when we have custodians available, and another group that uses the same facilities but just happens to be at a time where custodians aren't normally available, we want to try in some way equalize that as well.
Even that out.
And I think, just for the TV, everyone should be aware, that the youth groups don't get PA.
Get what?
They don't get the PA system. So even though they might be using it, we want to make it clear that, that they, and so a lot of these things, it's not like it's going to be run 24/7.
It won't affect the noise issues that came up when, when we were permitting.
Lacrosse doesn't use a PA system as our record.
So if people are just listening here, and they're going to be on there all the time.
Good point.
Thank you.
So...
Great question, Eric.
Yeah.
Just, is the, in terms, and it sounds like it's a, it is, you know, a good approach. Are the, are the youth sports weighing in on it at all, or is that coming up in the near future?
To answer that question, I did get in touch with one of the three people on the phone. I've reached out by electronically to the other two, and I didn't hear one, I did not hear from soccer, but since soccer already does this, I'm assuming they will be buying in. I did not hear, I did not get in touch with women's lacrosse. I did speak with boys' lacrosse, they were receptive to the proposal. They're very, what, the key thing to them is, is getting access to the fields and what dates they, they want. The good thing is Margaret has already, Margaret came in very prepared. She had met with all our high school coaches first, they went through every single date that they need on the calendar, and so she has that all blocked off. And so now it's going to be, I think, a good continuum. But to answer your question right now, to the best of our knowledge, yes, they're going to have buy-in, but, you know, if we hear of anything else, we'll let you know.
Yeah, I just would like to get some feedback at some point, because it's important to me, I'm sure, when the youth organizations are happy and with the...
Right. I mean, if they're not going to use the facility and they're going to go elsewhere because they can get a better deal, that's defeating the purpose.
I agree.
So that's why a pilot program, let's see how it goes.
Yeah, I agree.
Is, is there no youth soccer in the spring?
There is. Absolutely. It's a split season, fall and spring.
Well, I wrote down, Carol, that you said...
Oh, no Hingham High School soccer in the spring. But there's Hingham youth soccer.
Youth soccer and lacrosse.
Oh, okay.
Those are...
But there's no, Hingham High School plays soccer in the fall.
So youth soccer as well as the youth football, youth and lacrosse would be, you know, part of the study this spring.
Correct.
And what, we do not feel that baseball or softball would want to use it, but we also don't know if baseball or softball would be a good application on the astroturf field, the turf field.
They have their own, they'll have their own fields.
I'm just thinking of spring sports, though.
Right. And baseball doesn't use our facilities at the high school now. The girls' softball league does use facilities at the high school, there's only one field available for use right now. So, so anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. What do we have to... So we would like to make a motion to suspend the current multipurpose field usage fees for Hingham youth sports for the spring. And this is a pilot program to be revisited in the summer.
With a $6...
And replace it, and replace it.
Replace it, right.
And replace it with a $6 per head for a person for Hingham youth sports, Hingham youth organizations. And then, plus any applicable custodial charges.
Just one question. So we're not suspending it for non-youth sports? I just want to make sure that's clear as part of the motion, right?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, Ed?
This is really working on use of the multi, of these, of the multipurpose synthetic field, correct?
Both.
Well, it's, it's addressing use of all the facilities at the high school outside for the spring season, with a particular focus, I think, on the multipurpose field.
What about, what about the gals softball?
They have their own field.
Well, they do use a field at the high school.
Yeah, okay.
Are they part of this process?
Yes, because they're a youth sport, Hingham youth sport.
And again, that's to get everyone on the same page of how much everyone's paying.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. It's good work.
We'll find out in three months.
We will.
Well, still good work.
Yes, we will. Okay. The annual report for 2013, we're not going to spend a lot of time on this tonight.
Well, we...
I know. Well, it's what, what's the absolute deadline?
It was last week. No, I did turn it in with the, and I did this last year. I thought it was important...
But that's dogged, eight to report.
I thought it was important that you all have an opportunity to weigh in. And so I did turn it in so she had some sense of scope in terms of how much space, and told her that we would get her another copy tomorrow. I think perhaps if I had to do this all over again, I would probably have said in December, maybe, you know what, we have an annual report coming up. I typically take the template from the prior year and update it. But I should have asked, is that what you want me to do again this year? And I didn't. I did the template and, and then thought I could save time for you this evening by simply saying, tell me, you know, if this is okay, and we wouldn't have to have so much discussion. But we, I did get some, some great suggestions, but they're more than editing in some cases. So I guess what's on the table is that we need to move this along, so we either go with the things that are more simple editing and save for another year the notion of what the report should be or not, or we put together a little subcommittee and make that change now.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, we did spend time on the format some last year. And so, you know, I would, I would suggest that, you know, if we want, if we're not happy with the format, if we're not happy with the things that are, that go into it, and, and I admit that there, I think, is more in this year's report than last in terms of scope, because I think it addresses...
Well, the last two years, because we've had projects.
Right.
That's added a whole section. But the other kinds of, have always been, and, you know, I, I don't have any problem with saying it should be something else, but I guess what I'm saying is, we should have made that decision earlier, and I'll take the responsibility for that because I didn't ask you whether you wanted it to be similar.
Yeah, so I know, you know, some of you have forwarded some suggestions, some edits, you know, I think...
And some are, you know, purely edits and, and minor changes, and others are more. And I appreciate the time that people took, obviously, that some time to debate here.
I think, though, if we're, you know, if, if, if anyone has an issue with kind of the format of what's going into it, then that's a job for next year's annual report, and we can really tackle it ahead of time and start in December. Because it's typically due mid-February or so. I sent the building committee report to Bay Tower this morning, actually, and that went through our committee, and there were some edits, and I revised it and it went to her this morning. I still have to provide a photo.
So it sounds like that in next year's, I know you put together a overall agenda, you know, things that go on the agendas.
Timeline.
At some time in November or whatever.
Not that we'd have to have the report then, but at least what's a template?
No, no.
Let's, let's start fresh with this whole thing, and what is it that you think people would like to see, and what is it that... We, we've got lots and lots of old, old, old reports over here. You might want to go back and see what was put in them. It does seem to get longer each year, when I look at the other reports that are in there, you know, so, you know, perhaps we shouldn't be mentioning any names, for example, that would take out a lot of it.
And I will tell you, and Dot and I joked about this a little bit while we were both working on these, me for the building committee or for the school committee, and these are not easy to do. I mean, you're really sitting down and you're thinking about the whole year and how to say it concisely, but still kind of give folks a flavor of, of things that are important. So I do, I do think that, you know, you know...
And I think, actually, I'll, I'll say with pride that, you know, sometimes I look back on the year and say, did we do anything except the field, you know? Did we get anything else done? And we did, so we can look at that.
So I'm confused. What are we doing?
Well, some...
So edits are we going to do?
There have been some, there have been, I know Liza sent a few suggestions to Dot.
I sent edits, basically.
A few edits, right, exactly. I think all those are great.
I do think some of the things that Andy had about changing the order, that upfront, that should be the academic stuff, that, you know, changing the order of some of those things, that's...
I just cut and paste and moved that up top.
Yeah, right. They did give it more.
My comments to Dr. Gala was that if anyone does read it, we should have some more of the academic stuff first.
Yeah, and I think that's...
No offense to Liza, Ray, and myself, but...
No, I agree with that.
But me, me being re-elected, you being re-elected, Ray, and Liza being there, I don't think people were like, care?
No, it's, it's just, and I don't disagree with you, I think that's just the way traditionally, it's kind of been setting the stage, easing into, you know, here's some broad, and then it goes deeper and digs as it goes. But I, you know, I don't have...
It's always a hard report to do, too, because it's a calendar year, you know?
Right.
And you, and I look at it at the end and say, do I have enough that happened in the spring?
Well, that was the thing that struck me, and I didn't send it to you in writing, but, you know, should it be more chronological? You know, January of 2013, we started the budget season.
That's how I do the building committee report.
Yeah, right. Well, that's what I mean about really thinking about it early next year and saying, what do we want it to look like in terms of a template? And then we would fill in the template, and then there really truly is only editing to do at the end of that process. But I would suggest that we do some of the changing around of the order to put the appropriate focus. And Liza had some good suggestions, Carol had an editing suggestion, and, and send it on its way.
I read it, I chose not to. I've done that in the past, and I said, you know what, I'm not going to do it this year. Yeah, that's why, if you don't mind doing that, and just add it on to you.
I like, I do like the school leadership changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because not everybody knows about those, so...
Right, and those are significant positions. Well, thanks, everyone, for taking the time on that.
I don't know how many people actually read it on the ice.
We have a few appointments. Some salary advancements due to degree changes. We have a field trip, the Quiz Bowl is taking to the Washington DC National History Bowl, and B competition in April. That's after, oh, that's the weekend, that's the, the second weekend of the break.
Right, right.
Yeah, you know, break this year, Good Friday, Easter, Patriots Day is the Monday, that's all the beginning of the break, is the challenge.
It's, yeah, 18th is Good Friday.
Right, and the 21st is...
21st is Patriots Day.
Patriots Day. And the next Monday is town meeting, yeah.
Town meeting's always the Monday after vacation, which, I don't know who decided that. That's how they set up the chairs.
Any 48-hour items?
No, they're not.
Don, John, I do, I'm going to get to that in just a second.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Subcommittee's policy, we've heard from, we've heard from...
Community outreach met. We don't really have much to report at this point in time, but we're still working on things.
Okay. I know that you have a number of visits to PTOs scheduled and things like that.
We do. Coming up, I don't have my calendar with me, but Ed and Liza and myself will be hitting many places in the next month.
The drill.
Yeah.
I would just... Yeah, salary negotiations, we're meeting on Wednesday afternoon with teachers for our second session, so that should be good. Just a quick update on the fields, we're still trying to close out some things on the concession buildings, still working on a resolution to the floor that I think I mentioned the last time. Still some punch list items outstanding. We do have two invoices to approve tonight. One is Kavan Otachi Associates, they were the sound consultant that we had to bring in to do the testing and setting of the sound system after homecoming. So this goes back to November.
October.
October, yeah. And we knew that that was going to be the case, so we just hadn't gotten the invoice until recently. And just a bill from Par Corporation for Project Management for the month of January. So Kavan Otachi, it's 2,742.15. Par Corporation, Project Management, 2,072.58. I'll move to approve those.
And a motion?
I'll move to approve those. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. So, there's still some, still some things being resolved in the concession building. Not exactly sure when they'll be finalized, we need, we're still working on figuring out a solution for the floor, and we have Gail working on it, consulting with Seaver, the contractor, and there are a couple of options that were presented, both of which are going to cost a little bit of money, and we're working with Gail to try to get to the right, right solution of how to approach it. So, more on that when I know more. I really don't know anymore right now. Those need to be signed, and I don't think, I think that's it, we don't have an executive session, unless there's anything else. No, and take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.